Good evening and welcome back. For those of you just watching at home and just joining us in the school committee chambers, the committee has just returned from executive session where we conducted a strategy session related to the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Council 93, Local 230A, The Storekeepers, and the Administrative Guild of the Boston School System, a chapter of Local 888 SEIU CTW-CLC. We will now continue on with our regular school committee meeting. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV on YouTube as well as on Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. If you'd like to speak this evening but have not yet signed up, please see our staff person, Ms. Lena Parvex, in the hallway. Sign up for both public comment periods will close at 6:30 PM this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite my fellow members and the superintendent to join me on the floor for the presentation of some citations for our Shattuck Award winners. Each year, the Boston Municipal Research Bureau headed by Sam Tyler, who's in the audience this evening, honors a handful of city employees with the Henry L. Shattuck Public Service Award. The award recognizes public servants who exemplify integrity, initiative, leadership, and commitment to the public good. We're delighted that two of this year's honorees are members of the BPS family, and Ms. Ruffo and Ms. Rodriguez are both here with us this evening. Please join me in congratulating first, from the Tobin K-8 School, Ms. Maria Rodriguez. Ms. Rodriguez, come on up. Ms. Rodriguez is a lunch monitor at the Tobin School, where she encourages students to make healthy food choices and serves as a role model to students and staff alike. She's the embodiment of a team player and never hesitates to support a student or a staff member. So, Ms. Rodriguez, the Boston School Committee extends its congratulations to you as a recipient of the Boston Municipal Research Bureau's 2018 Henry L. Shattuck Public Service Award, which has recognized you for providing constant support for students, the glue that holds a community together, and an inspiration for children and adults. You are the embodiment of a team player and never hesitate to support a student or a staff member. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Yeah, please stay up, we'll take a picture at the end. We always have to get our picture. Our next Shattuck Award recipient is from the Baldwin Early Learning Pilot Academy in Brighton, Ms. Claudia Ruffo. Come on up. Ms. Ruffo is the lead surround teacher at the Baldwin, where her colleagues describe her as Wonder Woman. Her caring nature and unwavering commitment to children inspires everyone at the school to work tirelessly for all students. She consistently provides new and engaging work areas and visual displays for students that say, "Welcome, and children belong here." So, Ms. Ruffo, the Boston School Committee extends its congratulations to you as a recipient of the Boston Municipal Research Bureau's 2018 Henry L. Shattuck Public Service Award, recognizing your unwavering commitment to children and inspiring everyone at the school to do the best that they can for students. You are always ready to provide support for your colleagues when needed, and you go out of your way to make new staff feel at home and welcome. Thank you and congratulations. Both of you would join us over here, we'd like to take a brief photo with the committee. We're always happy to celebrate two of the many great performers in the district here. Thank you again. We're going to move on now to approve the minutes of the September 26th School Committee meeting. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, you can access the minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 26th meeting as presented. Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll move on now to the interim superintendent's report. Excuse me. I present to you our interim superintendent, Ms. Laura Peril.
Thank you Chair LaCanto, good evening, everyone. I just want to offer another shout-out to Maria and Claudia, who exude enthusiasm and dedication to their...
Excuse me, let me try that again. I just wanted to offer another shout-out to Maria and Claudia, who absolutely exude enthusiasm and commitment to their work and, most importantly, to their school communities, and we are all the better for it, so thank you again to them. We certainly have had no shortage of events and some highlights from across the district to share since our last meeting. On Monday, October 1, we had the pleasure of hosting a town hall with the Commissioner of the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Jeff Riley. The meeting addressed the state of Latino education and was hosted in collaboration with a few of our partner organizations in the Latinx community, Latinos for Education, Amplify Latinx, and the Greater Boston Latino Network, with remarks by the mayor and event host, school committee member Alexandra Oliver-Davila, along with Chair LaCanto, Dr. Coleman, and Dr. Yuriarte, among many others. It was great to welcome Commissioner Riley back to BPS, where he had previously served as an educator, administrator, and academic superintendent. He'd never been to the bowling building before, so it was great to have him here in this room. Commissioner Riley led a spirited discussion during the town hall, and in my remarks, I mentioned that we are committed to building a diverse central team capable of supporting teachers and school leaders of every background. We end that outreach, particularly for open leadership positions at BPS, as a current priority for me and for my team, drawing heavily on the Latinx community. We have a number of key open positions at the senior and executive level, many of which were very recently posted, and we're continuously committed to expanding the diversity of our staff, both in central office as well as in our schools. As many of you know, this is Hub Week, and it might be a little crowded getting around downtown at various events. This is a leading arts, science, technology, and innovation festival in Boston, with art and technology exhibits, many of them on City Hall Plaza. Throughout this week as well, over 500 middle and high school students and over 40 teachers from across the district will be participating in Hub Week experiences at City Hall Plaza. And the goal for these experiences is to expose our students to jobs of the future and give our educators the tools and context to prepare our students for those jobs. So, our thanks to the team at Hub Week, our Office of External Affairs, and a number of industry partners for coordinating professional development for educators and student experiences. College Month is underway. Last Friday, we kicked things off with College Pride Day, and there were quite a few college sweatshirts and hats around central office. A few notes on related upcoming events. Students in our middle grades will be introduced to college and career exploration through the American Student Assistance Orientation Exploration Program. It includes curriculum on budget and life planning, in-demand job and career options, the diversity of post-secondary pathways, the opportunity to practice interviewing, and all important developmental skills for our middle-grade students. October is also, in addition to College Month, we'll also be celebrating STEM Week, October 22nd through the 26th. Among other events and activities, a group of Boston STEM students from the McKay will be visiting the new Spice Restaurant that is apparently run by robots as part of their programming experience with City Sprouts. As someone who loves to cook, I'm going to reserve judgment on that until we see how that pans out. Finally, we'll hold our 7th Annual Citywide College Career and Internship Fair at the Reggie Lewis Center on Saturday, October 27. The fair offers the opportunity for students across the city to meet with representatives from various colleges, nonprofit organizations, and employers. Additionally, seniors will have access to financial aid experts from partner organizations to help with the completion of the free application for federal student aid, or FAFSA. So, please do share this information and encourage students and families to take advantage of the October 27 event, and you can access more information on our website. Fittingly for College Month, on Tuesday, October 2, I had the pleasure of joining Lieutenant Governor Polito, Education Secretary Jim Pizer, Commissioner of Higher Ed Carlos Santiago, Chief of Education Ron Dorsey and others, and Bunker Hill Community College President Pam Ettinger, as we visited Charlestown High School. Charlestown's early college program with Bunker Hill gives students the opportunity to take early college courses so that they are better prepared for college while earning credits at no cost before they graduate high school. We toured some classrooms, had a group discussion with teachers and students involved in this program. Expanding early college programs is a priority for the governor's office, and expanding dual enrollment opportunities of all kinds for our students is a high priority for the district, particularly this year. What's really wonderful to see is we already have, in addition to Charlestown, a large number of Boston-area high schools participating in various dual enrollment programs with our partners. This ranges from East Boston High School and Madison Park, to the O'Brien, Boston International, Boston Green, Boston Day and Evening Academy, The Burke, Fenway, EMK, Brighton, Exel, West Roxbury Academy, and Urban Science Academy, New Mission, and BCLA. And I mention them all just to show the diversity and range of our schools that are building and expanding dual enrollment opportunities for more of our high school students. Today, we celebrated Fall Walk to School Day across the district. It's a biannual event in April and October coordinated by Safe Roots to School Boston to promote walking to school as safe, popular, and fun. And a particular hit in light of last night's Red Sox victory is that Wally the Green Monster walked with students at the Sarah Greenwood K-8 School in Dorchester. Other schools, from the Guilde in East Boston to the Curly in Jamaica Plain, also participated in Walk to School Boston. Two more important notes. One, I want to just take a couple of minutes to talk about the recent research and ample news coverage of the Rappaport Study relative to exam school admission policies. And one of the reasons I wanted to talk about this is that, first and foremost, the results of the Rappaport Institute research are always useful in helping BPS continue to identify barriers and look at strategies and particular interventions to eliminate barriers for traditionally marginalized groups when it comes to exam school admissions. But I also am pleased to point out that, in recent years, BPS has taken a number of steps to increase diversity at the exam schools, and we are committing to additional steps to eliminate barriers for students, particularly our Black and Latinx students. It's important to note that the Rappaport Studies conclusions, while meaningful, are based on data through the 2013 exam school admission year, and the district's intensive efforts to address these gaps began in 2015. In 2016, BPS, with the support of Mayor Walsh and the Boston Latin School Association, began strengthening and expanding the number of seats in the Exam School Initiative prep course by additional 350 seats, nearly doubling the percentage of Black and Latinx students from 24% in 2014 to 50% this year. For the current school year, 44% of students who were recruited by BPS to participate in the Exam School Initiative based on criteria other than the traditional threshold of the Terranova exam were invited to exam schools. Historically, these students would have been excluded from the Exam School Initiative. So, I think it's particularly important that we are looking at new ways, not just new programs, but new ways of identifying students and pulling them into these preparation programs to level the playing field for more of our students. Black and Latinx students who went through the Exam School Initiative were twice as likely to be invited to an exam school as compared to those who did not. I was pleased to discover upon my arrival this summer that, in addition to these steps, BPS has continued to work on developing additional strategies to remove potential barriers, particularly focused around the Exam School Entrance Test, which is called the ISEE, as many of you know. In 2016, BPS decreased the forms of identification students are required to possess to take the exam. On a particularly interesting note, over the past couple of years, BPS has been identifying more students, as I mentioned, through alternative methods other than the standardized Terranova exam, looking at new criteria, including MCAS and grade point average. We're continuing to expand that identification method, and then the students are being directly registered for the ISEE exam to flatten another barrier. And then, most importantly, last week, I announced that the Boston Public Schools would take a further step, and as of 2019, we announced that we will be delivering the ISEE exam in the classroom for all BPS 6th graders across the district, another important step towards shortening and flattening the road, certainly to the ISEE exam. Since 2015, BPS has increased the rate of exam school invitations from 30 to 40% for Black and Latinx students moving into grade 7. At BLS, the percentage of students has increased from 16% in 2015 to 25% in 2018, similar jumps at BLA from 38 to 45% in 2018, and at the O'Brien. And I want to point out that Headmaster Tanya Freeman-Wilson is here with us tonight. Pardon me? Wisdom, sorry. Wisdom, thank you very much. Went from 51% to 64% in 2017. In addition, BPS will continue to review additional steps that we can make to continue to expand access, but I think we are excited and looking forward to working with our teachers and school leaders on final implementation planning for ISEE in the classroom in 2019. So, my last comment, and I'm sorry for the length of that, but I think it was important to share that. My last comment is that during next week's meeting, our Build BPS team will be presenting the proposed outline and plan for the next phase of the Build BPS Facilities Master Plan for the district. But in addition to the presentation that night, members of our team will be speaking with school leaders in the coming week, but equally important, organizing and will be sharing a list of, a lengthy list, of community meetings and outreach activities beginning from the 18th and beyond, and with lots of opportunities in different settings, different locations, and different formats around the city for conversation around this very important planning document for the future shape of facilities in the district. So, we look forward to a robust and lengthy conversation with many participants as we move forward in that planning process. And with that, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Peril. We'll open it up now to committee members for questions and discussion. I'll start first with Ms. Reyes.
Good evening, Superintendent Peril, hi. I had a couple of questions about the ISEE stuff that you've shared with us. My first being, if you could share more information about what steps BPS is taking in terms of opening those doors to other students, or a more diverse body of students? Because I know you said that we are taking steps, and I'm just wondering if you could share more about what they are.
Thank you, yes, and I'm happy to. So, I mentioned some of the earlier steps that BPS began, which includes expanding the Exam School Initiative, which is the summer preparation program by adding 350 seats. That began in 2016. The next was to begin broadening the selection and identification of the students, so traditionally it was just the Terranova. Now, thanks to the leadership of our Opportunity and Achievement Gaps Office and our Equity Office, they're identifying a broader range of students by looking not just at the standardized test that kids take in fall of 3rd grade, but by looking at their MCAS scores and GPAs. So, that is a second method. The third is to begin direct registering students, so instead of leaving students on their own, to get to the ISEE exam, which traditionally is offered seven Saturdays in November, they're simply enrolling this expanded pool of students in the exam while also prepping them through the Exam School Initiative. And then, the one that I just announced last week is to make it even easier, instead of having students have to get themselves and motivate themselves to get to those locations around the city, to deliver the exam in all classrooms, in all 6th grade classrooms beginning in November 2019. We are continuing to explore additional steps. One of the ones we are looking at is the way the grading calculation is done for our current BPS students. So, that is already underway in terms of studying and making sure we can implement it, and the same was true with the ISEE in the classroom decision. So, we will continue to make those steps and look at additional methods, but the two newest ones will be the ISE in the classroom, and then our continued work around the grading, which can roll out certainly by 2019 and possibly sooner, so we're working on that.
I'm also curious, are students, like, is there an opt-out option when it comes to taking the ISE, or do all students have to take it regardless?
There is an opt-out, yes, and thank you for raising that question because that has come up a number of times. And as I said, we're going to be continuing to work with teachers and school leaders to make sure that they are, you know, as we have in the preparation for this, but as we get ready to implement. But one of the questions is, we don't want to require yet another standardized test for students who may not choose to take it, or may not feel it's right for them, but rather offer the opportunity in the classroom during the school day. So, it'll be an optional and voluntary.
And then, sort of on the same line, the students who do take it, are they expected to then accept their results and go to those, or to one of the exam schools, or, you know, can they stay at the school that they are in at the moment?
Absolutely. I think Boston is a choice-driven system. That is a decision on which school you wish to go to is a topic of student and family choice, but I think the goal here is to broaden the range and number of students who have it as an opportunity and one of the choices they could choose should they so wish. But other than that, no, it is entirely up to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peril, thank you, Ms. Reyes. Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you, good evening. I don't think I should be as nice as her. It's going to be great sitting next to you because you're going to teach me so much. Good evening, interim superintendent. Thank you. I thank you for your question, that was going to be my similar question. I just wanted to expand a little bit on the exam school piece because I honestly don't know this. What beyond the exam is used in terms of criteria for being accepted? So, you talked about the pre, but then what happens in the post piece? Will there be other pieces that we will be looking at? And I think the grade piece that you mentioned, all those changes, I'm very happy to hear about all of these changes, but I'm wondering what else we can do beyond looking at the actual exam if there are other pieces. And I'll go out on a limb and say that if there is a possibility of also prioritizing BPS students to go into exam schools, but that's my own comment, and it's not the comment of anybody here, but just wanted to know that as well.
Yep. So, the current selection process is a balance between the, sorry, I'm just pulling up one piece of data while we're talking, is the exam and then also the 5th grade grades, and I'm going to look to, yeah, and the GPA. So, I don't have the breakdown of percentages, but one of the questions that we're exploring is the grading system of schools that use A to F versus the BPS system that uses 1 to 4. And we have... And we have a team that has been looking at whether or not it is disadvantaging the way the mathematical calculation happens.
It is.
Yes, no, the, we're, again.
Spoiler alert.
Yeah, spoiler alert.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And so, again, working with teachers and school leaders around implementing that change and assuring that that is something that we can do seamlessly, so. And there's a, there's a fair amount of momentum and interest in it, so.
Ms. Chairman, I just interject on this particular point, if that's okay, Ms. Oliver Davila.
This has been a point that's been raised by you a number of times, so please.
Yes, and I'm so delighted we have a interim, admittedly interim superintendent who is tackling this exact issue. So to get into the exam schools, I believe it's a fifty-fifty split between the results on the independent student exam and your GPA. And am I correct, Doctor? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the headmaster of the exam schools back here, so.
Excellent, thank you.
And I've really been digging in on the issue about the grade GPA, because as Ms. Perel said, in Boston, we do one through four or four through one, and the public, the private parochial and charter schools do A, B, C, D. And in particular, there's been people that have suspected, and I believe the district is looking at this, is, does an A-plus work at a private or parochial or charter school equal a level four? And in, and to really get granular on this, in Boston Public Schools, my understanding of the rubric says to get a level four, to get a four grade, you have to demonstrate that I believe you are one grade ahead. And so.
Of grade level.
Yes.
You have to be a grade level, and that is clearly not the requirement in many other schools to get an A or an A-plus.
Yep.
So we are tying our students, our BPS students' hands behind them on the GPA, which is a big input. And so, while I want to see more BPS students in the exam schools, because those are the students who've been with us all along, we do always have to be cognizant that all of our schools are open to all residents. And just because a parent chose to have their student in another school early on, they still have to have equal right or equal opportunity to get their student into any one of our schools, but we shouldn't be hurting our students. And if we're either doing that because of the exam prep or doing that because of the grading system, that's exactly what our Opportunity and Achievement Gap, I mean, these are two things that our task force was looking at as examples of where can we improve. So I'm so encouraged that you are taking the first step of bringing the ISEE into all of our schools. I think we have to take the next step to make sure the students who are taking the test in the schools actually learn the curriculum that is being tested in that, because I have heard anecdotally that there's some questions that are asked that are not in the curriculum. But also, the fact that you're willing to do a deep dive, and at an absolute minimum, if you can consider removing that requirement to get a four, you have to be a grade ahead, because I don't think that that is fair compared to the other schools, but if you're also looking at the grading system overall, I think that's great. I just want our students to be on an equal footing, not have less opportunity to even begin with. So I'm delighted you're looking at those.
No, those are exactly the steps we're taking, but I really want to offer credit before I turn it back over, so thank you for that. But I want to offer credit to Dr. Colin Rose and his team in the Office of Opportunity Gaps, as well as Becky Schuster, leading our Equity Office. So this work has been underway. My role has been to encourage it and to push it forward and to bring it out so that we can make it happen. So I'm really pleased, but this has been an active and, I think, eager topic of conversation, and so I'm happy to hear the support and encouragement. But these are steps we can take to level the playing field, and we should.
Thank you, thank you. I still have, sorry, another question. And I, although I do agree with you, I am concerned that the numbers have not really moved in many, many, many years, and that our exam schools should be reflective of the population of our district. So that's where my comments are coming from, and, and having a daughter that's not in BPS, you know, my statement, I, I stand by that because I do think that unless there's gonna be some real big game changers, and not that, you know, I'm, I'm with Dean Coleman, I'm not pro exam schools, so I've been saying all of that, but I'm glad to see.
Pro exam.
Pro exam, thank you, pro exam. I agree, thank you. Thank you for clarifying, and thank you for pointing that out. So I, I do, I'm glad to see all of those pieces. The other piece that I would like to see is that we can change everything to look at, you know, external activities, exams, grades, et cetera, but then we come to culture. So there, there has been, you know, in the, in the last few years, we heard a lot of, you know, things happening at some of our exam schools, and so I just would encourage that, along with what we are trying to do, is that there also needs to be some culture shifts. And I know that we have some new headmasters, and so that also, I think, is a great thing. But I would just encourage to continue the professional development, the conversations, the conversations with families, so that all students feel welcome in those spaces. And the other thing that I just wanted to ask you about is going back to the dual enrollment piece. I wanted to ask if we have a list of all the schools, all the high schools that are in dual enrollment, and with what universities and colleges? I would love to have a clearer picture. We had a, our strategic implementation plan that was really focused on preparing students to be college and career-ready, but I have no idea as a district where we are in terms of dual enrollment, in terms of internships, in terms of college access, and if there is something that captures that, where we can just have a sense of our baseline and where it is that we need to go, and that, I think, will also help us to figure out what are the partners that we don't currently have, that are missing, that we can bring to the table.
Yes, we can certainly provide that. While I rattled it off verbally, that was the entire list of schools, and it was a long list of schools, but to put that together in terms of numbers and who the college partners are is absolutely something we can do. It is also an active focus area and topic as we continue to drill down on strategies to elevate our high schools, to look at student engagement and rigor, and to tackle the broader issues of high schools, from open enrollment to our alternative education programs, which also do dual enrollment, to the overall findings of off-track youth. So dual enrollment is one of the strategies.
Yeah, I guess I would just, what I'm requesting is that if we can, if we can do some kind of document that, that has all of the college, not just the dual enrollment, but all the pieces that make up college and career, so we're talking about schools that have internships, because not all.
No, I'm sorry, we will put that chart together.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's what I wanted to, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Dean Robinson.
Yes, thank you. So I'll, I'll piggyback on your question, and then I'll bring up an additional question. I think it is important for us to identify the list, because we do want to praise the partnerships that we have in place. I know Cambridge College has a partnership in place with Charlestown, and so, having gone to the school and gotten excited and met the students to see what is taking place at Charlestown, been very pleased with the, the teachers and the leaders and the students. They're brilliant, they're bright, they're eager to come on a college campus and learn the components of what it means to be college-ready. So, you know, shout out to Cambridge College, but it is important for us to identify all of those colleges, so that the points that we've made over and over again in the past, I know myself in particular, that as we identify the colleges, we can also make those connections with the college leaders and continue those partnerships and build upon them. So thank you for asking for that specific list. My main point was to go back to the exams. Is there a component in place in helping students actually prepare for the exams that is on your strategy, your strategic?
That's the exam school initiative.
So they're going to take it on, on the school grounds. The exam school initiative is going to help them actually prepare the students to learn how to take the test.
Yes.
Okay. So they will be able to then strengthen that fifty percent that you were just talking about with the exam preparation, with the fifty percent of the GPA, correct?
Correct.
I'm gonna make sure, all right? Okay. Good, thank you.
And this is all, you know, important and ongoing work to drill down on, but I think there are some really important foundations that have been built over even just the past couple of years that we're beginning to see impact and traction, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Robinson, Ms. Robinson.
I just had one question to follow up about the dual enrollment. Are any of the exam schools involved in dual enrollment? Because I wasn't sure if I heard you mention any.
The O'Bryant, definitely, and I, my list, my verbal list may have left a couple of offs, so we will double-check all of that, but I know that the O'Bryant is.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, and I just want to make one additional point, and Ms. Oliver Davila, it's really following up on what you said, because you're absolutely right about culture. And so, we have had in the past, students in BPS who have taken the exam, who have gotten through the GPA, have been accepted, and have chosen to either leave the district or to, to attend the Boston Latin Academy or the O'Bryant, specifically, anecdotally, it leads to me citing the culture at Latin School. And it'll be interesting to see now, Headmaster Skereg has finished her, well, she's actually right about one year now, in November, and it'll be interesting to see, Ms. Perel, analysis of students over the summer who were accepted, or last year who were accepted and chose to matriculate starting in this September, if there was any difference from previous years, number one. And number two, particularly on that issue of culture, and anything we can do to make it more welcoming for all students? It'd be interesting to hear the collective thoughts of our three exam school leaders, all of whom I believe are graduates of their schools, which is interesting as well, right? And so it'd be interesting to hear their collective thoughts, is there anything, I know you're reaching out to school leaders all the time, but I'd encourage you to have this specific conversation with our exam school leaders, as well as maybe pulling in some elementary school teachers, elementary school leaders as well, and get their thoughts on what can we do to, are there further steps we can take on the culture issue to make every student who's accepted at an exam school want to go there, if they so choose? Ms. Reyes, as it brought up the question before. That's, thank you, that's my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Dr. Coleman.
You know, my colleague called me out earlier, so I want to be more explicit about my concern, is that I deeply applaud all efforts to make access to the, these schools more equitable and open to a broader range of populations. But I think we still have to, at one point, consider whether the structure of exam schools, which were initiated to perpetuate a selective, competitive culture that may not be what is needed in 21st century learning, and if we're looking at what is a good education for all kids across the district, and the impact the exam school has, I think particularly in our middle school areas and performance, I've caught it toxic in other environments, that at one point, we may want to consider whether there's a need to maintain the curriculum but eliminate the exam, so that is part of our choice. And if it's a good, attractive choice for people, and they're, and they succeed well in the system, more power to them, but I think it would drive both interest and broader interest in the rest of our high schools, and spread some of the social capital around the district, which we know is going to be central to our later improvements. I hope at one point, we begin to consider whether having this structure, which is a, you know, turn of the 19th century model, and reexamine what the 21st century school district should look like.
That's what I wanted to say. That's what I wanted to say.
Well, thank you, Dr. Coleman. Yes, Dean Robinson.
Dr. Coleman, what is, you know, as you've kind of kept your finger on the pulse of that type of movement, what of your colleagues across the country, what's kind of the, the culture of education from a theoretical perspective, you know, that you're hearing in higher ed, how it, how it produces that type of learner in higher ed to kind of ground your argument more?
Wow. That's a complex question. In essence, there are a number of universities, and I've been a part of and gone to, and I am at one, who have built a selective model that has looked at now our performance around one's numeracy and literacy as measured by standardized tests as the ticket to involvement, quickly finding that that may not be the real predictor. So, for example, GPA is more predictive of performance in college than your SAT scores, and so there's a broad conversation. There's a broad conversation about whether college is necessary, there are people paying kids not to go to college now, so they get involved using their skills more immediately. So I think higher ed is in the middle of a really reexamination of what's necessary, and our, certainly our business partners are suggesting that what we're producing, even at the most selective universities, is not what they need in the workforce, and that they need other social, emotional learning, so what people call soft skills, may be more predictive of what's needed. Creativity, cooperation, the ability to work in groups is maybe more central. I mean, I think it's really wide open. Certainly, in neuroscience, we understand that we're all, we can all learn, and a model that's based on testing what you, what your skills acquired, mostly through a function of the privilege and opportunities of your families, may not be predictive of lifelong success, but we create systems that reify early development, and that perpetuates throughout the, the system. And then whether you have exam schools, or you have honors classes and AP classes, you'll see some of the same problems across the country. The kids who learn quickly in privileged environments, early on, get the better coaching early, it's the same thing as sports, get good coaching, so they do better. That does not say the other kids, given the same level of support that they need to grow, won't do weakly as well.
So as kind of the, I would probably say arguably the foremost expert, you know, in kind of, in education among us, is this?
Your ear too is not here tonight.
She's not here tonight, right, right, right. So close tie. Is there, is, is this a, an uphill battle that you see us facing in bringing up this type of dialogue? So that's the first question to you, and then to the exam school graduates up here, I would ask that question as well to you.
And I'm gonna interject before, certainly have those on the committee answer as they see fit, but what I do want to suggest is that I've heard from the interim superintendent earlier that we will talk at a later date about further improvements to the, or changes to the way in which we think about exam school admissions and the criteria that we, we view as worthy for thinking about exam school admissions. And so I think a lot of this conversation can probably best be had around, you know, what type of additional modifications we want to make to the criteria review and the way that we attract and, and recruit students for the exam schools. But, you know, having said that, I, I want to make sure that we can move on to our agenda this evening, and so I don't want to get too far afield, but, you know, Dr. Coleman, certainly if you want to further interject and if there's any others.
I'd be delighted at another time to engage in this conversation more depth, but I am suggesting maybe a more disruptive approach to thinking about what's next than just modifying the current criteria.
Well, thank you, Dr. Coleman. I'd also note that, you know, as I'm listening to this conversation, I think there's another measurement that we can take from the higher ed field as we think about, you know, the commonality of a lot of the comments that we've heard tonight, and a lot of the comments have been around culture and the way in which students feel welcomed into the schools. We've talked a lot about the changes in leadership in these schools. We have leaders of each school that are alums of the schools. We have people of color leading each of our exam schools, and we've done a lot since the BL, the Black at BLS movement a few years back. Certainly in 2015 was when we began making greater strides towards recruitment and preparation for the exam to be entered into the exam schools. I think all of these things speak to a measurement that might be helpful for us to, to view best how the exam schools are turning the tide, and that's retention. So to the point that Mr. O'Neil made earlier around the idea of, okay, we've had a new super, excuse me, headmaster in Boston Latin School for the last year, how has that turned the tide with respect to students that are being invited to the Latin School versus accepting that invitation? I think there's also the question that was raised earlier around what happens to those students that have entered the Latin School and then had second thoughts and perhaps transferred to another one of our exam schools, or one of our open enrollment schools, or out of the district? You know, how are we doing, what effect are the changes that we're making having on retention rates? And so I look forward to seeing that as part of this report coming forward. I think it's, I really appreciate the superintendent, as well as our student representative, Ms. Reyes, in raising with specificity the questions around all of the specific issues that have been addressed by the district over the last few years with respect to raising awareness around exam schools, going out and actively recruiting, and going out and actively preparing students. I want to reiterate one other item that I think you left off your list a second time, which was mentioned earlier, the, the ID issue, you know, reducing the number of ident, pieces of identi- the ID issue, you know, reducing the number of pieces of identification that a student needs to bring to a testing site is moving mountains, as far as I'm concerned. There's a couple of hundred kids that are turned away every year, if I recall, from the last presentation we had around this issue, because they don't have the right identification or they don't have enough pieces of identification. These are the little things that create barriers for kids just to get in the door, or just even to be considered. And so, you know, we, we tend to push these little things to the side, but they really make differences. And they make differences for dozens and dozens of kids, and perhaps even hundreds each year, when we consider them for the schools. And so, you know, again, I want to applaud the work that the district's been doing. We've been doing meaningful work, it is showing results. It's not showing a sea change of results, and we acknowledge that. But we also acknowledge that the district continues to think about what are the meaningful changes that we can make that create more access and greater opportunities for our students, and how that translates into the entrance into these exam schools, which as we know are the keys to great college and career opportunities later on in life. Something further to add?
I'll, I just have to add that I think our goal always, while we've talked tonight about the exam schools, we have a variety of pathways through our very strong high schools, many of which are focused on different ways of increasing and expanding access to post-secondary pathways for all of our students. That's one of the strengths and why I wanted to share that incredibly diverse list of schools involved in dual enrollment, just to underscore the point that as important it is to offer every opportunity and flatten every possible opportunity for our students, there are many opportunities and not just one pathway forward. So our focus is on strengthening all of those avenues, inclusive of the exam schools, but also beyond and district-wide.
Thank you for chiming in on that, interim superintendent, I did not mean to leave that out. And I appreciate you, you reiterating that. Before we move on, I did just want to make two other notes. First, we did have an occasion for some of us to get together at City Hall. I was joined by Ms. Robinson, Mr. O'Neal, and Dr. Yuriarte to formally welcome Ms. Reyes to the school committee, as well as her alternate, who's in the audience this evening, a junior at Snowden and an East Boston resident, Mr. Elvis Rodriguez, who will be talking about a little bit later. Mr. Rodriguez is a, is going to be serving in support of Ms. Reyes and will be called upon to pinch hit or step in the shoes of Ms. Reyes should she be unable to complete her term over the, the next two years. Welcome and congratulations to both of you once again. And finally, and finally, I did want to take a moment just to reiterate what the superintendent led with, which was thanking our colleague, Ms. Oliver Davila, as well as our colleague on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, Ms. Amanda Fernandez, who put together the State of Latinos in Education event that I attended, as well as many other members, last week. And I believe there was two other meetings being held with the commissioner statewide, one in Holyoke and was the other one in Somerville. And they might have happened already, or they might be still scheduled, but, okay. But in any case, we really appreciate Commissioner Riley coming out to speak to us, and for Mayor Walsh introducing him as well. Thank you for putting that on, it's a critical, 40% of our district that, that we want to continue to shine a light on and provide services to. If there's no further discussion, I want to entertain now a motion to receive the interim superintendent's report as presented. Thank you, Dean Robinson.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the interim superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion carries. Move on to now to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Lacanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have one minute remaining and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will be allotted additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have eight speakers this evening, and we'll begin with Barbara Fields, followed by Jennifer Boyd Hurley and David Nave.
I don't believe Ms. Fields is here.
Ms. Hurley?
All right. Usually my timing is not this good, but I'm very excited about tonight. My name is Jen Hurley. I have, oh, I have, and to express my bias, I have a ninth grader at Boston Latin Academy, which was her first choice, and I have a sixth grader at the Warren Prescott, who unfortunately will not be taking the test in her school, but I'm very excited about that change. And so what I'm here to talk about is actually, I think hopefully, assistance to your discussion, access to the exam schools, which I think could be greatly exemplified by providing transportation. You might not know this, but, do you know what time BLA's first bell rings? Anybody want to guess? 7:20 a.m. BLS is 7:45, and the O'Brien is 7:25, right? This for children that have to get across our beautiful vast city. You might also, let me work with BLA, because that's really why I'm, one of the reasons I'm here. MBTA dedicated buses, Hyde Park, West Roxbury, they have two. Southie and Alston, who doesn't have a dedicated MBTA bus? Eastie, Brighton, Charlestown, North End. Some of the hardest ways to get there requiring three transfers, that I Google it at 5:40 in the morning just to check, they'd have to leave by 5:50, and that's of course if it's running on time, which I hope that it would. So I do believe that increasing access to transportation with neighborhood dedicated MBTA buses can only help with the diversity. And why should an every child have that option? These, and I, listen, I applaud all the work, and I usually come here when something's broken. As you probably all know, US News and World Report ranked those three schools, one, six, and 10, for college readiness of all Massachusetts high schools. How exciting is this? I just gave a presentation to CMA families about why they can stay. You know, many choices, Boston Arts Academy, maybe another local high school's right for you, but these three options? But to get there, BLA and O'Brien, sometimes there's more of a detriment. So why are we not providing this transportation? And Ms. Perrell, you haven't seen me, but I can tell you, I come here on an annual basis, basically like the swans of Capistrano, to come and beg for the bus for my neighborhoods, not just for me. I can arrange carpooling, I could. It's not fair. These kids already have a workload and an hour-plus ride, it just doesn't make sense, it's a no-brainer. We have one yellow school bus, and I don't know if you were here last time, but a mother was here from the North End describing how some little kids are left behind. Well, I have a ninth grader that's been riding a bus with the upper school kids, and that's the way, you know, the best way to get to school in a safe and effective manner. So I'm just curious why some neighborhoods would have a dedicated bus and some wouldn't. It just doesn't make sense to me from an equity perspective. And I know we're always concerned about finance. I'm the first person to think walk to school is great, but, and I'm very excited about the new home-based A model, that I think I see good strides on that. But when you're talking about exam schools, they're static, I can't move them. And I don't want a child to pick one school just based on transportation, it's not fair. And I'd also note, as you probably did from the Globe article, one of the things, hopefully you weren't misquoted, that obviously one of the things you're looking is to work thoughtfully and aggressively to expand access to those schools. It's not just getting in for these kids, it's getting away there. And I know some kids, unfortunately in parts of Charlestown, whose parents will keep them at a local school or not send them to the exam schools because they're worried about the transportation. So I see this as an easy fix, and I'm here begging like I do every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Our next speaker is David Nave.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Mr. Nave, and he'll be followed by Amanda Lapham and Malika Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Nave.
Good evening.
Superintendent, well, I'll keep it as brief and to the point. Unfortunately, since our last meeting, there has been no meeting. And I did retain some information from, I need to put it out there. Monica Roberts, without this woman, I don't know how your administration would run, Superintendent, okay? She is the only one who's contacted or had any concern whatsoever about Dylan and where his whereabouts. But when I request, we're going back all the way to the 13th. When I request my child's school records, I don't expect three pieces of paper, okay? And I'm not a pacifying person, and I came here and gave you ample opportunity with respect to meet with me, and you know the levels of concerns from sexual threats, headmasters with police reports on them. I pulled three police reports from BPS, that police report does not exist. There's conflicting police reports, or false police reports, where an administrator from a same school had to go in and say this never happened, this parent, but yet Detective Budsby was quick enough to jump on that case and charge us with assault. Dylan will suffer no more, this is not about me. This is about a 15, a 16, he just turned 16. And when I spoke to him last week, at last meeting, I told him that you would make a difference because you don't know what's going on and you have to give her the benefit of the doubt. And Dylan's always been a good little boy about that. But we're talking about a child's education. And you can only pacify a child to some degree where we lose our kids and they say, they get the, I don't want to go, I don't care. We all know the dynamics of it. This child still does. But yet you have an entire administration, and I've given you two weeks to meet with me, and you know every single thing from false police reports. Now, here's a letter from his doctor, just to let you know. Every incident that took place, now, if I remember correctly, the incident took place on September 8th of last year. Yet I have police reports of September 15th. Now, it's irrelevant, the police report, because Dylan never spoke to police. This came from your headmaster. There are other police reports that, I didn't know we had grounds for contraband of something or another, some cigarette tobacco was a police report. Ma'am, I, I require, require, now, we have agreed on an attention, but this is one of six phones that go all the way back to when Dylan started, every text, every email. Your headmaster at Murphy never retained the police report that I handed to one of their administrators in the office, unredacted, who is now Mr. Gilliam, that I informed. Now, he should have never been in this meeting to begin with. Mr. Gilliam gave this police report, not I was the one who had the police called, Superintendent. See, what people have to do is a sad thing, to cover up their mistakes as adults are in the positions they're in, to crucify a child makes, makes me not too cool with things. I allowed things to go as internal as I could, all right? There is no more internal, Superintendent. I've given you the respect, I've given you the opportunity, and to be referred to one individual that I dealt with last year that couldn't put one child and fix an issue where at Snowden they have a student that's a 10th grader. Let me read.
Mr. Nave, you're well past your three minutes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Headmaster states, yes, but the chairperson has discretion, not you, sir.
No, I, I am the chairperson, thank you.
Oh, you are, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Want to ask you to move on, please, because we do have other people that want to speak this evening.
So, so here it is.
Wrap it up.
I will wrap it up, sir, so you show the same respect, okay? This is my son, and I'm just discussing, I'm leaving, but there's not a concern. The only concern is, is that my attorney handles it now. That's the way it goes.
Mr. Nave, our chief of staff, and our chief engagement officer, and our operations superintendent who met with you Friday, passed along that we do have a meeting planned. Okay, thank you.
Can you please tell the next speaker, thank you.
Amanda Lapham, she'll be followed by Malika Williams and Letty Storm.
Hello, Ms. Rapham.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Amanda Lapham, I'm a parent of three BPS students. My fourth grader is at the Manning since K2. My now eighth grade twins are at Boston Latin Academy, and they started at the Manning in first grade. This is the third time I'm coming before you in as many years to bring again to your attention the amazing work that goes on at the Manning. A K through five, tier-one school with excellent scores, skilled differentiated instruction, and providing a full inclusion model with 20% of our students being designated as emotionally impaired or EI. At the moment, there is limited access to tier-one sixth grade options in our zone. While our pathway partner is the BTU, not all of our students can be served at BTU. In the year my older kids were in sixth grade, all but one of the EI students could not stay with their cohort, with frankly, very stressful and sometimes tragic effects for those kids and their families as they lurched through options for their sixth grade year. Our BPS system in our zone is not managing to serve the needs of all sixth to eighth graders, and most particularly not the unique needs of students with EI who are managing well and performing well in Manning's inclusive model. Importantly, the cohort itself becomes mutually supportive. It's part of what makes an inclusion model so successful. It was also challenging for the students who were able to go to BTU to be fractured from their cohort. I'm hopeful that some sound solutions can be found for these concerns by the time my new fourth grader and his classmates are ready for their sixth grade year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I noticed you have some written comments there, Ms. Rapham. If you have any that you'd like to share with us, you can certainly leave them with Ms. Sullivan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Malika Williams, followed by Letty Storm.
I don't believe I saw Ms. Williams this evening. Sorry, it's Ms. Storm?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I like to actually speak in Spanish, if that's okay with you guys? Okay, so, buenas noches.
It took me a second. I don't get, I don't get called on very often.
So, estoy aquí, soy un padre de un estudiante que está en el cuarto grado en la escuela Manning, y lo que quiero dejarles saber es que el sistema que estamos, que tenemos ahora corrientemente, no está apoyando a los, a nuestros estudiantes en grado seis a ocho, especialmente los niños que necesitan ayuda adicional, los niños que están en un, en un programa con EA, EI. Ellos necesitan mucho apoyo. Lo que pasa es que en la zona donde estamos nosotros ahora, no hay escuelas. Después que ellos se gradúan del quinto grado de la escuela de Manning, ¿dónde van a ir esos estudiantes? Los niños que más, los estudiantes que necesitan ayuda, apoyo de las escuelas, necesitan estabilidad. ¿Qué pasan con ellos cuando se gradúan del quinto grado y no tienen dónde ir? No hay, no hay, ¿cómo pueden, no hay muchas escuelas que le pueden ofrecer la ayuda que el plan que la Manning le está ofreciendo con el plan inclusivo que ellos tienen ahí? Y quiero que consideren eso en el futuro, estos niños necesitan ayuda emocionalmente, académicamente. Necesitamos que alguien nos ayude a tener más opciones cuando los niños se gradúan de la escuela. Y no solamente, eso también lo que hace es darle a nosotros, nos da, los niños de nosotros, los estudiantes todos, necesitan apoyo, no solamente de sus padres, pero de sus maestros, la escuela, la comunidad. Y el programa que la escuela Manning ofrece ahora, le ofrece un apoyo increíblemente, especialmente mi hijo que tiene diez años, necesita ayuda adicional, que él ha progresado muchísimo desde que entró a la escuela Manning en su segundo grado. So, por favor, le pido que para el futuro, consideren agregarle más escuela que ofrezca un plan inclusivo para los niños, los estudiantes que necesitan ayuda. Muchísimas gracias, thank you very much.
And Ms. Storm, if you'd like to repeat your comments in English, you're welcome to have additional time to do so.
Oh, well, thank you. Amanda did go over, so I didn't want to, and being conservative at the time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jose Lopez, and he'll be followed by Adam Rudolph.
Good evening. Good evening, school committee, good evening, chairman, good evening, interim superintendent. My name is Jose Lopez, and I'm the Chair of the Education Committee of the Boston branch of the NAACP. Thank you, number one, for your report provided so far. We are excited at the progress being made regarding our exam schools, and we look forward to working with the school district to furthering those initiatives. As we move into this 371st year of the Boston Public Schools, we call on you to remember that our conduct here and the example that it sets is the most important. statement we can make regarding our commitment to provide an adequate and constitutionally mandated educational experience for our public school students. In the last four months, we have had evidence presented that believes us, or leaves us to believe that they're of permanent harm to scores of our city's most vulnerable students. I often fear that each of you on this school committee often see my role as an agitator, as a problem or a nuisance. I sincerely hope that that is not the case. I do not intend it to be. Before this, I was a school teacher at many of your schools. I advise the Commissioner of Education on the Ratio Imbalance Advisory Act. My work is focused on preserving what I believe is one of the last remaining public trusts, which is public education. And the NAACP's mission statement demands for us to end discrimination in education. The truth is that today, and in the superintendent search committee process, we do need more from all of you, and each of you individually. From the outside looking in, here is what the nation knows about BPS. One of your high school students was deported, placed in the target of immigration for an argument that started in a school cafeteria based on a school police report, that the number of black teachers in our district is less now than it was in the nineteen-eighties, that black and Latinx students are still stuck in the opportunity gap, that one of our premier schools was investigated by the feds and found to be in violation of the Civil Rights Act. Our school district was found to be in violation of the Equal Educational Opportunities Act of nineteen-seventy-four and Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen-sixty-four in regard to our English-language learners. We also learned that families living in predominantly black and brown communities were treated differently than their peers living in predominantly white communities when it came to school choice.
Thirty seconds.
We also learned that our student assignment policy is resegregating our schools. This has all been in the last six years, many in the last six months. The NAACP has no choice but to be active around public education. As far as the NAACP is concerned, our goal is to advocate for children in this district. We must challenge you to do better if we see that a more inclusive and proactive option was available. The same is true with the superintendent search committee. We are disappointed that there are no black parents who are from our community sitting in this committee. These are the places where independent voices are most needed. As always, the Boston branch of the NAACP is here to help. To the extent that you wish to work together to identify independent black parents who are qualified and interested in assisting in this critical search, we are ready. To the extent that you wish to gather feedback on the credentials, expertise, and experiences our membership and families wish to see in their next superintendent, again, we are ready. And to the extent that you want to do more and fundamentally change the way this body interacts with our communities and see us as partners instead of just beneficiaries, we again are ready. It was a Boston black parent who brought the first desegregation case in the nation in eighteen-fifty, and they stand ready to do so again if they have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Adam Rudeau.
So I'm Adam Rudeau. I'm a school psychologist. I'm working in the Martin Luther King Junior K-38 School and the Frederick Pilot Middle School, Grove Hall. Chairman LaCanto, Ms. Oliver Davila, Dr. Coleman, Mr. O'Neill, Ms. Robinson, Dr.-
Your computer is-
Oh.
Oh, yeah, take it off. Your computer is going. You were freaking out the one underneath it.
Yeah, I gotcha. Technology.
Can't read that quickly.
Dr. Uriarty, Ms. Robinson, and Ms. Perel. On behalf of the Behavioral Health Services Department of the Boston Public Schools, we would like to take a moment to express our overwhelming gratitude to all of you, to thank you for your overwhelming support of our efforts to increase students' access to licensed behavioral and mental health specialists within BPS schools. Thank you for listening to our concerns about existing levels of access and genuinely supporting us in advocating for more. Thank you for not just hearing us, but for truly listening to the stories, the data, and the recommended ratios that we brought to you so many times throughout all of last year's budget season. Thank you for understanding that our increased advocacy arose from repeated cuts, which impacted our collective ability to support our schools. And finally, thank you for listening to the various educators and stakeholders from across the district to better understand the role that we play in supporting the social, emotional, and behavioral health of all BPS students. We are proud to share with you and the entire BPS community that the contribution the mayor made available in June was tremendously helpful in hiring ten new positions. These ten positions include seven new school psychologists and three new pupil adjustment counselors, who are our social workers. We are grateful to have had the opportunity to successfully recruit highly qualified and diverse staff to join our department, which now includes seventy-nine total positions, seventy-seven of which provide direct services to BPS students and families. The additions to our department have increased our presence in schools, and we are better able to provide social and emotional mental health services in multiple languages to students across the district. So thank you for sharing in this vision with us, the vision that all BPS students in schools should have appropriate access to the licensed behavioral health support they need. These supports are having a demonstrable impact on the health and well-being of our BPS students every day, and the students, parents, and school communities have unanimously recognized them as essential. We know our advocacy must continue so that we can advance the district's work in closing the opportunity and achievement gaps for some of our most marginalized students. We look forward to working with each of you to ensure that we can continue to support the students and families of BPS. Thank you all so much. Sincerely, Behavioral Health Services Department.
Thank you, Mr. Rudeau.
Thank you, Mr. Rudeau. I just want to add for the committee that, in addition to the positions that Mr. Rudeau mentioned, that those additional funds also included five more nurses in our schools, so.
Mr. LaCanto, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item this evening is in the consent calendar, which consists of grants for approval totaling nine-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-dollar, one-hundred-and-one dollars, excuse me, and in-kind donations with a total estimated value of one-million-five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars and seven cents. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Ms. Oliver Davila.
I don't have any questions. I just thought it was really great to see the Headspace app, and I'm glad that people are using it. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you to the in-kind donation.
Anyone else?
I just wondered if we could have a little bit of information about what the Boston Children's Collaborative is going to be doing with our early childhood.
Yes. Bennett, can you come up for that? Oh, okay, got it. Oh, thank you.
How are you?
Good evening. If you could just introduce yourself when you approach, please. Thank you.
I'm Tiara Dias. I'm the universal pre-K director.
Welcome.
And I apologize, I missed your question.
Give a little bit more information about what the grant is actually going to do.
Sure, sure. So, we currently are working through the preschool expansion grant to serve about two-hundred-and-fifty children who fall below the two-hundred percent federal poverty guideline. We've been able to identify specific services we know these children need. However, we'd like to expand our work across Boston to think about some of the other services that are not included: mental health, immigration, workforce support, as well as homelessness. So this grant will allow us to do a gap analysis to determine where those supports are needed and how to offer those in the future, as well as move those from the community base into our Boston Public Schools.
So this is all about the community-based?
It's about-
Or is it both BP, in, in BPS as well as community-based, or just one?
So, it's, it's going to make sure that those services that are provided in the community base move on into Boston Public Schools, so as the child transitions from K-one into K-two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you, Ms. Dias. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Dean Robinson, you have a question?
Yes, thank you so much for that clarification. How will it inform, how will the, those organizations inform BPS, inform the kindergarten teachers, even the parents? How will the parents have feedback from your gap analysis, and how will it also inform the schools?
So we're using about fifty community-based organizations to conduct a survey that will include surveying the community-based orgs as well as families. The goal of the gap analysis is to, one, determine the cost of some of these services, the location, and then specific services for specific areas.
Can you give me a specific, of those specific services?
Sure. So, one great example would be translation services. We've identified, for example, that there may be more translation services needed in East Boston as compared to another community. So this gap analysis will help us determine the cost to provide those services, specific community-based organizations that may need those, a way to determine how effective those actual services are, and then communication supports to share those with families.
And then, once it's shared with families, how will it then inform the schools? How does this, how does your work allow a kindergarten teacher to be more successful in educating that student?
Yeah, so, one of the things that we've learned through the preschool expansion grant is that these comprehensive service providers often provide coaching and curriculum support that will allow us to take some practices that have been used with the comprehensive service providers into the classroom. So when you think about things like how we may sit children in our centers, to how we provide access to our curriculum, those will be used, those comprehensive service providers will be used to help inform both instruction as well as the environment and any other services in the classroom.
So have you already identified partners in BPS, the early childhood partners, who will be the partners with this work?
So that's part of what the initial work is, is to survey, for, one, to determine how much work has been done to date, to confirm what services are provided internally to BPS, to look at what is provided in community-based organizations, where those gaps are, and then how to overlap the two.
What's exciting about this, and I thank you for providing more clarity, what's exciting is for the last decade, these have been conversations that parents have had, parents who, you know, have had their kids in early childhood programs and who have wondered, how do you connect the dots with great services that these organizations are providing, and how to integrate it with the school system so that it continues to benefit parents, students, and then the teachers? So I'm really excited to see what comes out of this analysis. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Dias. Thank you, Dean Robinson. Ms. Reyes.
I'm just curious, because I was looking over the list. I noticed Headspace was on here, and, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Tiara.
And I, I see that it's for educators and staff, and I'm wondering if students will at some point get to use Headspace, because I personally use Headspace, and it's really helpful, so.
Great question. Russell or Bennett, can either of you come up and answer? Okay, Russell, you're up. Thank you.
And if you could just introduce yourself when you approach, please. Thank you.
Hi, so I'm Russell Hanson. I'm the manager of Foundation and Corporate Relations. So, at the moment, that's not being offered. This was a very generous donation by the company and set up for use for, for actually all staff and educators, but at the moment, that's what they're offering.
All staff? Just all staff? I'm wondering?
Yes, they gave a little over ten thousand licenses, so they are providing a code which can be used by staff and educators.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
I'm sorry, I had better news.
No, keep plugging away. Get, get the rest.
And we can keep looking at that as well. Thank you, Russell.
Are there any other questions or discussion on the grants and in-kind donations? Yes, Ms. Robinson?
Just want to say, you know, it's, it's wonderful that the district is able to get this much in in-kind donations, but it also exemplifies how much more we need. And so if these things, you know, if they were not being provided by in-kind, there are a number of things that really are part of everyday life that our students wouldn't have access to. So how we begin to have a more realistic view of our budget and what our students need to be successful moving forward is something we really think we need to, to look at, because if we didn't get these donations, where would we be?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. There are no further questions. I'll entertain a motion now to improve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila and Dean Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection? Any objection to approving the consent calendar by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved. Excuse me. I'm getting over a bit of a cold, so I apologize my, for my stuttering a bit tonight. Our next report in action item is the charge and membership of the superintendent search committee. Now, you'll recall that at our last meeting, I presented the proposed charge and co-chairs of the search committee, our colleague, Ms. Alexander Oliver Davila, the executive director of Sociedad Latina, and Dr. Keith Motley, the former chancellor of the Uni, the University of Massachusetts at Boston. Tonight, I have presented for you and your consideration, my fellow members, the full membership roster representing the district's diverse stakeholders. The eleven proposed members represent the gender, ethnic, racial, and geographic diversity of our city and reflect the strength of Boston and our district. Included in the proposed membership are school leaders with a wealth of teaching and administrative experience at elementary and secondary levels, representing a broad cross-section of our district, including alternative education, inclusion settings, exam schools, and strong parent and school relationships. The proposed membership also includes leaders from the teachers' union, higher education, business, and the faith communities, three current Boston Public Schools' parents, and individuals with a broader array of backgrounds in special education settings, non-native speakers, and high concentrations of socio-economically disadvantaged students. Bless you. The proposed search committee members are in alphabetical order Pastor Sam Acevedo, the founding executive director of the Boston Higher Education Resource Center, HERC, a co-chair of the school committee's Opportunity Achievement Gaps Task Force, and a member of the 2014 Superintendent Search Committee. Carlos Brown is a parent at the Geirld School in East Boston, and also a teacher and administrator in the Wilmington, Massachusetts Public Schools. Dr. Tanya Freeman Wisdom, who's with us this evening, is the headmaster of the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science, which is her alma mater, and also a parent of a Boston Latin student and a recent Boston Latin Academy graduate. Katie Gross is the principal of the Curly K-8 in Jamaica Plain and a product of the Boston Public Schools as well. Carolyn Kane is a parent at the Henderson K-12 School in Dorchester and currently serves as the first executive director of the Autism Commission for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. She has also served as the volunteer chairperson of Boston Special Education Parent Advisory Council for the last ten years. Craig Martin is the 2018 Massachusetts Elementary Principal of the Year and was a 2009 Boston Public Schools educator of the year. He's a Jamaica Plain resident and currently serves as the proud principal of the Michael J. Perkins School in South Boston. Michael O'Neill, another one of our fellow colleagues, is a Charlestown resident, a proud product of BPS as well, and a former chairperson of this body. A business executive, Mr. O'Neill also served as a member of the 2014 BPS Superintendent Search and currently holds a position of Secretary Treasurer on the Executive Board of the Council of Great City Schools. And finally, Jessica Tang is a Dorchester resident and the president of the Boston Teachers' Union. Excuse me. Additionally, and in consultation with Mayor Walsh, the proposed search committee this year will include a student representative. In an era of student voices leading nationally on issues of gun control, immigration policy, and climate change, among many others, and locally on the issues of restorative justice and education funding, the time is right for the committee to elevate student representation among those who will select the next permanent superintendent of the Boston Public Schools. We have asked Elvis Rodriguez, who's with us here this evening, an East Boston resident and a junior at Snowden International High School, as I mentioned earlier, to serve in this capacity. Mr. Rodriguez is currently in his first year as a member of the Boston Student Advisory Committee, and again, as I mentioned, is the alternate, alternate representative to the school committee, supporting Ms. Reyes in her duties. I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Wal, uh, excuse me, Mayor Walsh, in recognizing the importance of our students in this decision, and for several members, most notably Mr. O'Neill and Ms. Oliver Davila, for advocating on behalf of student voice in this process. Thank you to both of you. For those search committee nominees in attendance, please stand and be recognized. Now, as a process reminder, my September twenty-six memorandum noted that the search committee will hold a series of public hearings throughout the city to solicit public feedback and input into the desired candidate's qualities. The community and district partners will be invited to be present, excuse me, and the public at large will also have opportunities to comment. There will also be additional opportunities to solicit public input on finalist interviews in early 2019. Both phases will provide opportunities for groups who feel that they may not have been fully represented on the search committee due to size limitations, to make sure their voices are heard at the beginning and at the end of the search process. voices are heard at the beginning and at the end of the search process. School committee members have made clear to me and to others that opportunities for youth voice in particular, as well as non-English speakers, must be heard and must be included during these phases. So with that, at this time, I'd like to open it up for questions and comments from the committee. Ms. Robinson, thank you.
I think we're joining others in being very excited, particularly about the addition of the student member, because we met you last week, and it was exciting to meet and hear the youth and their advocacy for this role, but given what, you know, given the way that students participated in the last search, it was very clear that they were very clear about what was needed, and it was really important for us to hear their voice. I think it's extraordinarily important that they be part of this fully, because it's their lives that are on the line, and they know what they need, and we really need to hear from them. So I'm very happy that we were able to make that adjustment in addition to the overall team. So thank you for advocating and making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dean Robinson?
I do want to also echo and applaud student voice, because that is exciting, and I look forward to seeing the leadership that you provide in the district and mobilizing students to attend as many meetings as possible, because they are, you know, the most important resource. I did want to just ask the question from, since I heard it in public comment, the question regarding African-American parents of K-8 students that was brought up? If there's any thoughts to that particular demographic?
Well, so the, as I mentioned earlier, the search committee was put together from probably close to four dozen individuals that were considered and otherwise put their names forward to be part of this process. And, you know, in putting together this process, I took a look at what we've done over the past four or five searches, and typically, that body has looked like somewhere in the neighborhood of six to 12 members. And so, thinking within six to 12 members, we have many more diverse constituencies than six to 12 within the Boston Public Schools. And so the primary effort with respect to trying to recruit and give voice to as many folks that represent different aspects of our district, come from different backgrounds, both including gender, race, ethnicity, and geography, it's a, it's a, it's a very large puzzle, if you will, in trying to put together this type of service. And so we have made the effort to ensure that there are multiple parent representatives on the committee. There are parents of color, representing our Latinx population within the district, representing our African-American population within the district, and the same is true of the diverse representation that we see throughout the rest of the committee. So yes, in simple answer to your question, there are parent representatives of the African-American community on the, on the committee.
Yeah, I saw that. I was just specifically referring to the K-8, since the superintendent more than likely is going to hopefully, you know, be here beyond a high schooler's tenure. So a parent of a K-8 would have a more invested interest. So just food for thought.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know, speaking from experience, I know how hard it is to put together a search committee, and you always have, and I particularly want to thank people that sent in resumes or offers to help and for your willingness to consider that, and I want to make sure to point out that what I heard you say today is that you want to continue to have the involvement of those folks, in particular, as we move to the public phase, both to help us host events now, and I hope the co-chairs will consider that, but also when we move to the public phase, when we have a number of people interview the finalist candidates, that in effect becomes a great list for you to start from, to involve those folks since they expressed willingness at the beginning. I know how hard it is to try to hit so many different constituencies. You know, another comment that was made was, well, there was only technically one teacher with the president of the BTU, Ms. Tang, and yet I know all three of the school leaders are on there. All three were previously teachers, including one was a teacher of the year, educator of the year, and then moved up through the ranks, which is exactly the type of thing we want to encourage and applaud, because a few years ago, we weren't doing that in Boston. And so, you know, folks, folks bring a range of perspectives to the table. I know how hard it is to try to fit in every, every interest. I love the fact that people expressed interest in being involved. I hope they continue to stay involved in the public process at the beginning, the public process at the end, and stay and engage with us throughout. But I thank you for the thoughtful way that you put this together and appreciate, especially thankful for your willingness to consider something we did not do four years ago, which was have a student representative on it. I think, quite frankly, the work that BSAC has done the past few years has showed us, I actually had lunch with Kyondre McClay today, our former student rep, and told him he can claim some credit, because he and his predecessors have shown us the seriousness of purpose they bring to this role. I have no doubt Ms. Reyes is going to as well, as we have already seen. And so I think it makes perfect sense for you to take the step that you did. Thank you for your willingness to do it, and we look forward to Mr. Rodriguez joining the search committee, and we're glad to work with you in that process.
Well, thank you, Mr. O'Neill, and I want to go back to the beginning of your comments around continued public participation in this process, and it's something I glossed over in my introductory comments, but have certainly written about it in the September 26 memorandum, as well as the memorandum that's been circulated in your packets today. You know, I wanted to take a specific pause to think about, and this is a conversation I've had with the co-chairs preliminarily, when we do get to the first phase of public dialogue, it'll be around the job description that we'll put out there to attract candidates for this role. And, you know, we've got a pretty good-looking job description to begin with, you know, we, I think that committee in 2014 did a pretty good job of putting something together, and that, that was after a period of, I believe, six or seven years where we hadn't had occasion to go back and dust off that job description and update it. And so I think we're in a good position to hit the ground running with the job description, nevertheless, we need that public input to make sure that even the job description that we wrote four years ago reflects the needs of today's district. And I've asked the search committee co-chairs to proactively reach out to a number of different community groups to assist us in hosting those conversations, and one of those suggestions came from you, Mr. O'Neill, and a further effort was made this afternoon in some conversations with the NAACP to request their assistance in hosting a, one of those forums as well. And then, moving on, as you noted, there's a couple of different phases here for public dialogue to occur, and similar to what happened in 2014, rolling into the winter of 2015, we had a period, once the finalists were announced, where we hosted a series of public interview panels for all of the finalists, and that included a number of individuals from across the city, representing parents, representing teachers, representing community groups, that had an opportunity to play a role in interviewing in public each of those finalists. That was very successful, very well attended, even as I recall during the hellacious snowstorms of 2015. We also streamed those online live, and so we'd want to look to that as, as the floor that we want to achieve for that public engagement process when we do reach the finalist phase as well. And again, as you point out, we've got a stable crop of individuals that are eager and willing to help us out at that stage and play a role in, excuse me, interviewing our finalist candidates. So I'll look forward to that, and thank you for pointing that out as well. Are there other questions or concerns from the committee? Ms. Oliver Davila?
No, thank you. I mean, I don't want to repeat everything that was said, but I think that there is an opportunity for people to be involved along the way, and we have been having conversations with the chair and with Dr. Motley and the previous chair, just to figure out how we could make this process a little bit different and a little bit. Not that the last one wasn't inclusive, but I think now we have more technology and we have more ways of collecting information, and so, you know, can we do things like surveys? Can we have different ways for people to have input? Again, hosting events with other organizations, it doesn't have to be, you know, come to us. We all, we're going to hit the road and listen to people, and there'll be lots of opportunities. This is for everybody. I mean, it's a, it's a search committee. Trust me, you probably wouldn't want to be on it. There's so much work that's going to have to be done, but it is going to be inclusive, and we're going to hear everybody's voices, because, you know, this is, this is for all of our students and for all of Boston. So I know that it is hard to put together a small committee, and there's so many people that I talked to that told me they were interested and expressed that, and I'm very excited to see that people are so interested. So I encourage you to keep on, you know, being interested and participating, because we're going to need everybody's voice. And again, there'll be plenty of opportunities. I'm excited to work with Elvis. I heard that either you're going to take over the world, or you're going to blow it up, so let's hope that, that you actually take it over. So we're really excited to work with you, and I'm excited to work with all of the search committee, all of the people that bring so much experience and knowledge and wealth. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila, and I believe Mayor Walsh's exact words about Mr. Rodriguez was, he cannot run for mayor until Mayor Walsh is done with his term. So we'll look forward to big things from you, sir. Ms. Oliver Davila, thank you again. We really appreciate you taking this task on even before you knew how much work it was going to be, and we echo the comments that you've made about the robust and inclusive process that we have ahead of us. There are no further questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion now to approve the membership of the Superintendent Search Committee as presented this evening and the charge that was presented on September 26.
So moved.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Regina Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan. I'm going to give a moment for our interim superintendent to return to the, excuse me, the school committee chambers, but as we do that, I will announce our first report this evening, which is a student residency policy update that will be presented by the district's ombudsperson, Ms. Carolyn McNeil, who will now please step forward with her presentation. As the interim superintendent returns to her chair, I will ask her to provide some opening comments. Welcome, Ms. McNeil. We look forward to your presentation this evening.
Sorry about that.
I tried to speak as slowly as possible.
Thank you, and good evening, Chairman LaCanto and members of the school committee. My name is Carolyn McNeil. I am the ombudsperson for the Boston Public School District. One of my responsibilities is overseeing student residency and ensuring that we defend fidelity of our student residency policy and to make certain that seats in our Boston Public Schools are reserved for those students who reside in the city of Boston. I am here this evening before you to make two recommendations to our current student residency policy. These will greatly assist in making the district's residency compliance efforts more effective, and it will also streamline our investigations. Our mission is to create an equitable, coherent, and innovative school system. We greatly value city residents having full access to our public schools. A strong residency policy and the rigorous enforcement supports these values. It is important that Boston Public School seats are filled with city of Boston residents. BPS reserves the right to request a variety of documentation and to conduct an investigation into where a student actually resides. We recognize that residency can and does change for students and their families during the course of the academic year. The Boston Public School District receives information of residency violations from an anonymous tip line, teachers and school administrators, family, students, and community residents. All tips and information are followed up on and vigorously investigated. We are particularly sensitive to the needs of our families from historically marginalized populations, such as those students experiencing homelessness, who may be experiencing life challenges that result in behaviors that raise inaccurate suspicion. Our residency policy was conceived from Mass. General Law's Chapter 76, Section 5, and was revised in September 2013 to include eligible students applying to exam schools. It states that in order to attend Boston Public Schools, a student must actually reside in the city of Boston. The residence of a minor child is presumed to be the legal primary residence of the parent, or parents, or guardian, or guardians, who have physical custody of the child. Residency is defined as, quote, "the place where a person dwells permanently," not temporarily, "and is the place that is the center of his or her domestic, social, and civic life." The Boston Public School residency policy is outlined in detail on our website and in our family and student handbook, which is distributed annually to every student and family attending the Boston Public Schools. Contained in the next slide is a portion of the residency reminder letter, which we send out to families in October, reminding them of the requirement to prove residency and the documents that they need to provide. The documents we require are fairly standard and make it such that families in non-traditional circumstances will not find the process overly difficult or onerous. This is a snapshot of last year's student residency by the numbers. In last year, we had 132 total residency tips and investigations for the academic year. Of those 132, 62 were general residency investigations, which include all schools. Of that 132, 70 students fall on our November ISEE Student Residency Flag List for exam schools who have addresses outside of the city. Of those 70, 28 students proved Boston residency. 27 students proved to be non-residents of Boston and were not given an invitation or were discharged from consideration of the, at the exam schools. 12 students were not invited due to test scores, and less than 10 students never sent in their GPA, so were not considered. The 70 students is where I want to draw your attention to my first policy recommendation, whereby, if you currently attend a Bos, pardon me, a public school outside of the Boston Public School District, we will require a letter from the respective superintendent from that city or town stating that they are aware of Boston residency as per our requirement prior to taking the exam in November, but attending their public school. I'm asking that the letter be original on letterhead and notarized. It must accompany our required documents prior to taking the ISEE. I have had conversations with several school districts residency coordinators that agree that this would assist them in cutting down on fraud as well. And some of those towns that were included last year of students who were not considered are Newton, Brookline, Dedham, Randolph, Watertown, Wayland, and Brockton. They have all agreed that this policy would assist them in rooting out fraud. The second policy focuses on those students who have been found to be in violation of our residence, our residency policy and have been discharged. We reserve the right to request additional proofs of documentation if a student and their families have previously been found to be in violation of our residency policy and are re-registering their child in BPS. We currently code that as a residency violation in our student information system. Our technology department can and will add an alert flagging that particular student and case if they have been discharged and they're trying to re-register. We have found numerous instances where students have been discharged, particularly from our exam schools, and then they re-register under a new address and have gotten assigned to some of our higher-demand schools. In conclusion, both of these policy recommendations will ensure that we have a stronger and more effective residency policy for the future, and that regardless of who sits in my seat as ombudsperson or yours, that we continue to make certain that seats are reserved for city of Boston residents. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I am happy to take any questions that you have.
Well, thank you, Ms. McNeil, and I know you've been working on this for quite some time, and we appreciate that. Open it up now to members for questions. Ms. Robinson?
Sure.
I thank you for your report. I just have a question. Why your only, um, why policy recommendation number one is only about public schools and not other types of schools outside of the district? Private schools, parochial?
So... Because th, these particular students that are going to public schools, they're proving Boston residency but continuing to go to another public school. So, they're sort of violating both, they're violating City of Boston because they're not actually living in City of Boston. We found numerous instances through investigations that they're actually continuing to live in the town where they're going to school, but saying that they live in Boston. So, they're sort of double violating both towns' policies, our policy and, and the other schools.
How does that work if, for example, the, the child's family, their families are divorced, and one parent is living in one city and then the child, you know, in their, in two different places and the kid is going back and forth?
We recognize that fi, family dynamics have changed greatly and, um, and we take that into consideration. Um, and, and so, it's, you know, for us, um, we, we have conversations with people because we recognize, but when we investigate and we find out someone is actually going to school and, and we see them coming out of houses, I mean, we do pretty thorough investigations. Um, it becomes pretty clear that they're not living in the City of Boston. Um, we've had occasions where through conversations, um, you know, we see them getting on buses and so on and so forth, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. O'Neil?
I just want to thank you, Ms. McNeil. I know how hard you've worked on this. This is a big difference from a few years ago. Um, this is taxpayer dollars we're talking about, and every seat that someone takes who lives in Canton or Randolph or Quincy or Brookline or Newton or Wayland or the other towns that you mentioned are seats you're taking away from Boston Public, Boston residents. And so, I appreciate your, um, sensitivity to family dynamics and particularly your sensitivity to our homeless population. Having said that, your policy recommendations appear very well thought out, so I thank you for the work that you're doing on this.
I do want to make one, uh, one note. Um, we have a very short period of time in between when the exam or the test scores are given to us and the time that we send out invitations. It's about six weeks. Some of this work we can do prior to when the test results, prior to when we get the test results, but this will greatly, um, greatly help our investigations. And I want you to know that once an invitation goes out, we do not backfill those seats. Okay? So, so we don't have a waiting list for the exam schools. Once those invitations go out, that's it. So, um, we don't, so we have to, we have a very short period of time to really get on this, and I can't even tell you how greatly these will assist in that endeavor. That, that the invitations that go out go to Boston residents.
But this is not just about the exam schools. So, we're seeing these same issues at some of our other high schools um, that are attractive to folks in neighboring districts. We're also seeing it some of our elementary schools, some of our early learning centers. Right? This is, you're looking across the board. This isn't just an exam school issue.
It's, it's not just an exam school issue. We're seeing it across the board. And I can tell you that in the three years that I've, or two and a half years that I've been overseeing it, um, the numbers are growing exponentially in terms of the tips that we are getting. So, I think, um, I think the word is getting out. Um, and we have a lot of school leaders and administrators really assisting in this endeavor and getting the information that we need.
Good. This is great. This is plain and simple theft of taxpayer dollars. If you live in another district, we'd love that you're interested in it, but you're free to move into Boston. Um, but right now, we have Boston residents who would love to have seats at our early learning centers, at some of our kindergartens, at some of our, um, you know, a number of our elementary schools, and a range of our high schools, and those are for Boston residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. I couldn't say it better myself. Ms. McNeil, um, really appreciate, um, your, uh, your hard work on this. Um, I did want to ask you, um, I presume you've done it, but this has already been vetted through the Office of Legal Advisor, correct?
It has.
And this is, this would be certainly compliant with what our existing policy is and any of the applicable laws. Thank you. You mentioned, um, I believe it was, uh, on the order of about 27 or so students that we're, um, we ejected from the I S E E exam last year as a result of residency, um, violations. Are there other forecast impacts here that, that you're able to quantify uh, when we think about how this policy might affect students coming into our district?
So, I want to clarify. Those 27 students that were discharged were, were students who had been offered, either offered an invitation to one of the exam schools or we, we, they were discharged prior to getting that invitation. So, that was strictly exam schools.
Okay, thank you.
That wasn't.
But the, um, and I apologize for getting that number and, and its description wrong. Um, but the, the bigger question is, do we have a, any sort of estimate, um, as to what type of, um, the number of seats we might be able to recoup here from people that might be, um, fraudulently claiming residency here?
In terms of...
And if you can estimate, it's fine.
Yeah, I, I really don't. Um, it's, it's, it's a tremendous issue. It, it, it just really, it really, really is. And, uh, what, what we're finding is families continue, uh, families move about, we know that. There are a lot of families whose children continue to go to school in the City of Boston, live elsewhere, and they do it for convenience sake. Um, I can tell you already, this year, we have sent out eight discharge letters. And those are students that are in elementary schools that are living in other cities or towns.
And that's roughly over about a five-week period, right?
And this is, this is, this is since the beginning of September.
Right.
Eight.
Right. Well, I thank you again for your work. We really appreciate this presentation, and we'll look forward to taking action on this proposal at the next meeting.
Thanks.
For our second report this evening, we have two short presentations on tentative collective bargaining agreements. One, as you heard earlier, uh, the dis, the, uh, committee adjourned a, uh, executive session to discuss the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, ASME Local 230A, the storekeepers, as well as the Administrative Guild of SEIU Local 888. At this time, I'd like to invite Jeremiah Hassan, the Labor Count, a labor council with the BPS Office of Labor Relations, and Zach Scott, Executive Director in the BPS Office of Human Capital, to please step forward with their presentations. First, I'll turn it over to the interim superintendent for her opening comments.
Thank you, Chair LaCanto. Um, so, we recently reached a tentative agreement for a four-year contract with the Administrative Guild, which represents our school secretaries, special education clerks, and clerical staff in our schools and central office. These individuals are essential to our workforce, working directly on the front line, supporting so, so many other members of our staff as well as our students, um, particularly in schools. Um, uh, secretaries are the, um, open door of our school communities and welcome everyone, staff, visitors, um, students, and families alike into our school communities. The tentative agreement includes greater flexibility for schools in hiring and greater opportunities for staff, an evaluation rubric aligned to best practices and evaluation, and benefits that develop and reward both our experienced staff and more junior members. We'll be asking that you ratify and vote on this agreement to approve a supplemental appropriation from the City of Boston. The second agreement covers our storekeepers bargaining agreement. That's a quiz for everyone to look up and say, "We have storekeepers." Um, so, on July 18, 2018, the Boston Public Schools negotiating team reached a tentative agreement on a new collective bargaining agreement with the storekeepers, um, which is being, uh, submitted to the school committee for approval. Um, this is a small bargaining unit, um, which Jeremiah will explain, and the tentative agreement ensures that storekeepers continue to have the employee benefits they need to continue serving all of our students. So, with that, let me turn it over to Zach and Jeremiah.
Yes, good evening Superintendent, Chairperson LaCanto, and committee members. Thank you for having us. My name is Jeremiah Hassan, Labor Council for the Boston Public Schools.
Uh, and I'm Zach Scott, Executive Director for Human Capital and Boston Public Schools.
Uh, this evening, I'm here to give you a brief presentation on the tentative agreement we reached with the, uh, store, with the storekeepers there, ASME Council 93, Local 230A. As Superintendent Perrell mentioned, we reached this tentative agreement on July 18th, uh, and the storekeeper, storekeepers' members ratified the agreement on August 28th, 2018. We're requesting that you vote on this agreement and request supplemental appropriation funding in your next hearing session on October 17th. Uh, the basic information on this agreement with the storekeepers, uh, as Superintendent Perrell mentioned, it's a small unit currently consisting of five members. Uh, consistent with our other contracts, this is a four-year agreement running through the summer of 2020. Also, consistent with the other agreement, with agreements we've reached, this calls for wage increases of 2% each year, and the overall cost of the contract will be $55,794. And in terms of highlights for this agreement, we have a, a strong working relationship with this group, which resulted in minimal changes to the overall language. Uh, the additional benefits that we are adding to, to the membership are an additional salary step of 1% each year in the next, for the next two years, which offers some financial growth and recognition of longevity within the bargaining unit. These members will also be entitled to the paid paternity leave, which is consistent with the other agreements we've reached with our bargaining unit partners and the City of Boston employees. Those are the highlights. If you have any questions, I'm, open the floor.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Hassan. Why don't we, uh, hear from Mr. Scott as well, and then we, uh, we'll take all members' questions at the same time.
Thank you. Uh, good evening Chairman LaCanto and committee members. Um, following up on Jeremiah's presentation, I'll be also providing a brief presentation on our, uh, recent tentative agreement reached, uh, with the Administrative Guild. Uh, Superintendent Perrell mentioned, uh, the Administrative Guild represents our clerical and technical workers at BPS, uh, including our school secretaries, special education clerks, uh, and other technical, uh, technical and clerical staff that work in central office in our schools. Um, they are, uh, important members of our school community, uh, helping to ensure that our schools and central offices run smoothly uh, and are also often the first face a student or parent sees when they come into a Boston Public School. So, um, I'm excited to share the highlights of, uh, the tentative agreement that we reached with them. Uh, similar to, uh, as Jeremiah shared with the storekeepers, we'll be asking for ratification, uh, at the next session on October 17th. Uh, the, the contract length and, and wage increases are, are consistent with what we've reached with other bargaining units in the, uh, BPS. Uh, so, it's a four-year duration with a 2% wage increase each year. That four-year agreement is actually broken into two separate agreements, a one-year agreement and a three-year agreement, uh, with a total overall contract cost of 3.7 million. Before we turn it over for questions, just a few highlights from the contract that I wanted to, uh, share with you. Uh, the first is that this contract provides greater flexibility for our schools, uh, in, in hiring staff that best meet the needs of their school community, um, by expanding the candidate pool to which, uh, school leaders have access to. Uh, and at the same time, it provides many guild members with far more opportunities, uh, in the district for positions that they, uh, didn't have, uh, access to prior to this agreement. Uh, the second, uh, is an evaluation rubric that, uh, we've refined uh, and adapted to best practices that we've learned, uh, by working with other employee groups. Uh, moreover, this rubric provides, uh, greater clarity of expectations for staff, um, uh, and supervisors to better, uh, meet the needs of our changing schools. Uh, the last highlight, uh, that I chair is, um, some, there's some additional compensation benefits in this, uh, agreement uh, that we believe help, uh, retain and reward our more experienced members while raising, uh, the compensation for our entry-level positions to help, uh, ensure that we are, um, retaining those folks as, as well as getting, uh, great people into those positions. Um, so, I'll just close by saying we think this, uh, agreement, uh, meets the district's priorities of attracting, developing, and retaining great people, uh, while providing a contract that's fair and supportive for our, uh, guild members. Um, so, with that, we'd be happy to answer questions that you have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Scott, Mr. Hassan. I'll open it up now to questions for, um, uh, excuse me, members for, uh, questions and discussion.
Just have one quick question.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
So, this goes back to 2016? So, we're, we, we'll be paying back wages becau...
Correct.
And I believe you mentioned, uh, if I can piggyback on that, Ms. Robinson, you mentioned earlier there's a cost, um, to the, in the current, um, year for implementing this deal. Uh, previous, um, years, isn't there a collective bargaining reserve that we can tap into with the city to pay for those retroactive increases?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, very good. Any other questions from the committee? Okay. Well, thank you so much for, uh, your presentation. We appreciate the presentation that you gave us earlier in executive session as well. Um, I want to applaud, once again, the, um, uh, the district's labor relations team and human capital team in its, um, s, strong fiscal stewardship of, uh, district resources. These represent, um, strong, um, financial, uh, agreements with each of our employee unions, but also recognizes the hard work that each of our employee unions do here. I believe you, we have 12 bargaining units at the, uh, the district, and, uh, with these two settlements, that brings the number to, um, I might be wrong about this, but I think the estimate is somewhere around eight. Um, so, we're doing very well this round in, um, getting done on time and, um, and, uh, representative of, uh, again, um, fiscally responsible agreements, uh, moving forward. So, thank you again. We'll look forward to, uh, taking action on these, uh, two collective bargaining agreements at our next session.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Our next report is a proposed policy on sickle cell disease. At this time, I'd like to invite Jill Carter, our Acting Assistant Superintendent in the Office of Social and Emotional Learning and Wellness, to please step forward with her presentation. First, I'll turn it over to the interim su, uh, excuse me, interim superintendent for opening comments.
Thank you, Chair LaCanto. Tonight, you'll hear a proposal from the Office of Social, Emotional Learning and Wellness, Acting Assistant Superintendent Jill Carter, um, seeking to establish a policy that all schools follow, establish protocols and procedures for addressing the needs of children with sickle cell disease, and regularly evaluate the implementation of these plans.
Welcome, Ms. Carter.
Good evening. So, I'm going to give the presentation, but I am most, also will probably call on Stephen Chen, the Director of Training and, uh, Accommodation for the Equity Office, um, for some questions at the end. Um, I'm really happy to be able to present to you the proposed BPS policy on sickle cell disease. In an effort to better meet the needs of students with sickle cell disease, Boston Public Schools proposes to implement a comprehensive policy to ensure that we are creating safe, healthy, welcoming, and sustaining learning environments for students with sickle cell disease. Uh, this proposed policy meets the obligations BPS agreed to under a voluntary resolution agreement with the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights on January 30th, 2018. And as a part of this resolution agreement, BPS agreed to develop this policy to ensure that BPS meets its obligations under federal law with regards to students with sickle cell disease. Uh, the objective of this evening's presentation are to share a proposed policy for your consideration and also to raise awareness and understanding of the impact that sickle cell disease has on the wellness and learning of our students. The Boston Public Schools strives to be one of the healthiest school districts in the country. Research shows that healthy students are better learners, and studies clearly indicate that health inequities interfere with learning and disproportionately impact low-income youth of color. In order to close the opportunity gaps, we must address health inequities, such as sickle cell disease, that makes it difficult for our students to focus on learning and contribute to them missing school. Sickle cell disease is a group of genetic blood disorders that cause, uh, changes in the shape of the red blood cell, and students with sickle cell disease experience anemia, extreme pain, and a number of complications that result in a disability that impacts their major life activities. Like most chronic diseases, sickle cell disease impacts the whole child, physically, socially, emotionally, and it ultimate, ultimately can interfere with learning. Sickle cell disease affects individuals of all races and ethnicities, but in the United States, it especially... States, it especially is prevalent among African-Americans and Hispanics. And in Boston Public Schools, 89 students are currently identified as having sickle cell disease. However, due to historical stigmas, parents may choose not to identify their children as having sickle cell disease. Our healthcare partners specializing in sickle cell treatment in the city tell us that we might expect up to 250 or so students with sickle cell to be enrolled in BPS. As I mentioned in my introductory remarks, the proposed policy was developed in response to a January 2018 voluntary agreement with the Office of Civil Rights. The comprehensive policy proposed was developed by the Sickle Cell Advisory Group, which is made up of advocates from the Center for Law and Education, representatives from the Greater Boston Sickle Cell Disease Association, community experts, parents, students, and BPS staff from the Offices of Social, Emotional Learning and Wellness, Legal, Special Education, and Equity Departments. Dr. Linda Grant, our recently retired medical director, led this work for BPS Health Services. So the proposed policy states that sickle cell disease is a disability that limits major life activity. Students with sickle cell disease qualify for a comprehensive evaluation and consideration of eligibility under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act to determine services and accommodations. All schools must follow established protocols and procedures for addressing the needs of children with sickle cell disease. Sorry. Sorry, I'm one slide off. And students with sickle cell disease have, sorry, I'm just gonna catch myself up here. So furthermore, BPS acknowledges that the successful implementation of the policy relies on fostering and maintaining a culture of awareness and acknowledging the history of sickle cell disease and the unique challenges students with sickle cell disease face. With this in mind, BPS recognizes that people with sickle cell disease have long faced harmful stigmas, many with racially charged origins. Additionally, people with sickle cell disease are often challenged about the seriousness of their disease. And finally, students with sickle cell disease have long experienced barriers to their health and success in school. The implementation of this policy includes strategies for increasing identification through multiple outreach and public awareness campaigns. There are specific considerations regarding enrollment and confidentiality and access to interim services and supports that are automatic and guaranteed pursuant to a comprehensive evaluation and a full Section 504. Finally, BPS has already begun development of our outreach and awareness campaign and has plans to work with the welcome centers, early childhood, and community providers to reach families. We also have begun training of our special education coordinators and will soon train nurses and other staff. The Boston Public Health Commission is also committed to partnering with us on these efforts. Finally, I'd like to thank all of those involved in developing the proposed policy. We look forward to working with the advisory committee to implement the awareness campaign and other elements spelled out in the implementation parts of this document. With that, I'm happy to take questions.
Well, thank you, Ms. Carter. I'll open it up now to the members for questions and discussion. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. I applaud the district for taking this action because, as a parent many years ago of a special needs child with a bleeding disorder in the school department, I know how difficult trying to help staff understand the particular needs of a student which may not appear every day. It's difficult. So I know that this will be welcomed by any number of parents. My other question is, what about children who have a sickle cell trait but do not have full-blown disease because there's some of the same issues that they may need access to, and how will that be handled, as well as those who are clearly identified as having sickle cell?
That's a great question. I will say that in the documents that we've provided, the piece about sickle cell trait did not come up, but I think that the students, all students that have the types of medical disabilities outlined would be eligible for 504 consideration. I don't know, Stephen, if you want to address this?
Yeah, so just to kind of reiterate what Jill had said earlier, it's when we have students who may have a medical condition of any kind that may substantially limit a major life activity, which may include like a sickle cell trait, so it may be on, it may be off at various points. I think one of the key things is, we will be implementing this policy in similar ways where we will be doing a comprehensive evaluation for any student with those types of medical conditions.
And in the case, we've talked about that some parents are hesitant to share this, but children may be exhibiting particular signs. What kind of training is given to teachers in terms of their sensitivity around children who may be requesting an extra drink of water or asking not to participate in a particular activity because of physical discomfort but may not even themselves know how to articulate it clearly to help people to understand exactly what they're going through?
So in the proposed policy that you have in front of you, one of the automatic interim supports that we will be implementing immediately is things like what you described, which is immediate unlimited access to water as needed, the restrooms as needed, to see the nurse as needed, and there's a whole, full comprehensive list there. And so one of the big things about this particular policy is there's a large training component where we are training all of our special education staff who do the 504 evaluations. And as part of that as well, there's going to be an awareness campaign where we need to make sure that teachers who are implementing these plans also know what to do in each one of these cases so that there isn't that stigma, so that we educate people that this is something that students receive as a result of the services they need to get an appropriate education.
And I would just add that, you know, the district has a focus on our essentials for instructional equity, and focus area one is about creating safe, healthy, and sustaining learning environments. So we really have a lot of efforts out there to help teachers, all teachers, understand that they should really be looking at the learning environment for all students. And I think if we focus on that, and I think we can use sickle cell and others as examples of, you know, you may not know who is in your class sitting before you, so thinking about access to water and some of those other pieces as being, you know, essentials for all students, but there may be some students out there that really need that for specific consideration, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dean Robinson?
Eighty-nine students on, I guess, the first or second slide that are identified. Of those 89 students, you have the schools that they're enrolled in. Do those schools have nurses?
All of our nurses, or all of our schools have nurses, so they would have nurses, yes.
And the identification of those students is connected to the nurses.
The 89 students that I'm referencing are actually identified in the medical records of the students. That's how we know how many we have, so yes, those nurses would be there.
Because I'm just thinking about, you know, a nurse's caseload as to, you know, the priorities on any given day. And they know, I have a student in X class who has this and a student in X class, but I know that many schools have nurses that come in at 12:30. What happens in the morning if that student has a crisis? What's Plan B?
So that's actually one of the key components of this particular policy, is that we aren't relying on only nurses in order to do what was traditionally called the Individual Health Plan. We're actually going through the full 504 process with the students now, so that does include a child fine component. It includes an interim services component where the moment that we find out that there's a student who has sickle cell, there are automatic accommodations that are listed in that document. And then we go through actually a very comprehensive 504 evaluation that would involve data, medical data, information from teachers, like it's the full process in order to determine the appropriate services so that we don't, if there is a situation where, for instance, a child is at a school and the 12:30, the nurse leaves, we actually have an appropriate process in order to make sure that the student has medical services throughout the day.
So there's a bit of a challenge with that. When we had, you know, some principals here before, I remember when Principal Martin was here, and, you know, we asked some of the questions about some of the students with health needs. And, you know, I'm grateful for his transparency in saying, you know, many times even the principal has to step in. The challenge with students with chronic health illnesses is there's specific needs that need to be addressed. So, you know, again, this will go back to a budgeting conversation and personnel conversation. I'm really grateful we're highlighting sickle cell, and I'm grateful that BPS is recognizing the stigmas that surround especially African-Americans. The research out there is very, very clear. And then depending on the breakdown of the students of color, the cultural stigmas that also present, we're talking about, you know, the lack of support maybe at home, but then also, I'm hearing you say that in the interim plan, we're trying to add additional supports at the school, but this is a chronic health condition. So I really applaud this highlighting of sickle cell, but I really would like the district to think about the personnel matter of an issue of this magnitude.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. I think you make a great point. I wanted to ask as a follow-up before we move on to, I know Ms. Oliver Davila has a question. With respect to 504 plans that are created for students with disabilities in our district, would any of that address the question of staffing and assignment that Dean Robinson is getting at? In other words, would we shift around resources in order to accommodate a student based on a 504 plan?
So I think the answer to that is, once an evaluation, and just to be very clear, the evaluation is part of the 504 process that is already in an existing circular. And so if it turns out that a student needs additional staffing or additional supports in order to achieve FAP in the school, that would certainly be a conversation that we would bring back to, you know, special education with Jill's team, just to figure out what's the extra resources that we need to make sure we provide to the student in order to give them the appropriate access. And so it's hard to say at a systemic level right now, but it is a very individual case-by-case determination in terms of making sure that we treat each student individually with what services they need, and those are conversations that I regularly have with central office.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Anything further, Dean? Okay, thank you. Ms. Oliver Davila?
Thank you. Thank you for working on this. I actually don't have questions because Jerry asked my question. Thank you.
Well, thank you then. So, and you took the question right out of my mouth. I know you mentioned in your presentation that October 15th is when you target the beginning of an awareness campaign. Maybe you can talk to us a little bit more about what that timeline looks like and also what that entails.
Sure. So some of the pieces have already started to roll out. This summer, the Special Education Department did a presentation to principals at the August Leadership Institute, and one of the slides that they highlighted already for principals is that we were going to be proposing this policy, so we've already started raising the awareness, if you will, to principals. And as I mentioned, the special education coordinators are already having this information integrated into some of the other trainings they're doing. But what we do intend to do is to also do a number of things to raise awareness. Ultimately, we want to have letters to parents, we want to have flyers available in welcome centers, there's a lot of different strategies that Dr. Grant has already started talking to folks in different departments about how we'll move forward with this. We want to have a webinar available so that a number of, you know, different staff within the district can start taking advantage of learning more about the disease, so. We also will plan to do some workaround posters and some other pieces. So that's, you know, again, we'll spell out the details of that over the next couple of weeks.
Well, thank you, Ms. Carter, Mr. Chen. Really appreciate the presentation tonight and bringing this home. I know this is an issue that the district's been working on for a number of years, and I believe I heard somebody mention earlier, it began even in the Carol Johnson era. And so certainly with the further intervention of the Office of Civil Rights and looking to continue our proactive services around students with disabilities in our district, particularly with disabilities that are either underrepresented or otherwise not disclosed for a variety of reasons to the schools, highlighting the services that we can provide in assisting students to obtain the free and appropriate education that they deserve. It should be the bedrock of all policies within our district. So we'll look forward to taking further action at the next meeting, and thank you again for your presentation tonight and your work on this. We will move on now to our final report this evening, which is the 2018 State Assessment and Accountability Results from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Mary Delman, our interim executive director with the BPS Office of Data and Accountability, to please step forward with her presentation. But first, I'll turn it over to our interim superintendent for opening comments.
Thank you, Chair LaCanto. Tonight, Mary will provide us with a report on the annual state accountability results for the district, which were publicly released shortly following the previous school committee meeting. We posted a press release and a link to the full list of accountability results on the district website, bostonpublicschools.org. But tonight, we'll delve more deeply into the results and findings. Many of our schools showed significant improvements. I want to highlight a few in particular. The John Winthrop Elementary School in Dorchester is exiting turnaround status. So it entered turnaround status, the former Level 4 school status in 2013. Principal Leah Blake McKetty's school was noted for its improved leadership and instructional practices, along with higher MCAS scores and meeting of accountability targets, among others. Two other BPS schools were highlighted by DESI as schools of recognition. So as Mary will explain later, the state, this is a complete overhaul of the state's accountability system as well as the release of new results. And so all the categories have changed, but what used to be known as commendation schools are now known as schools of recognition. These are among schools in the top category of meeting targets, and then they are further singled out for recognition. So one of them is the Winship Elementary School in Brighton, designated as a Level 3 in 2016, meaning it was in the lowest 20% of schools statewide. The Winship met or exceeded nearly all targets in every category this year, which led to its school of recognition designation. We want to salute Principal Mona Ford Walker and her staff and teachers. She noted that teachers have increased their peer observation and feedback, coaching, use of data, expanded opportunities for hands-on learning, and aligned instruction to best practices, all practices and habits that we are working to see more schools adopt. The second was the Joseph P. Manning Elementary School in Jamaica Plain, which we heard about earlier this evening in comments from Ms. Lappam and Ms. Storm. They too were noted as a school of recognition. They had a Level 2 designation in 2016, exceeded all achievement and growth targets in English Language Arts and Math this year, led by Principal Ethan Dablamont Burns. Manning was also recognized for both high growth and exceeding targets, such as chronic absenteeism for students with disabilities. As we acknowledge and admire the improvements in some schools and consistent achievement of others, there are a number of schools that have shown decline and/or are still in need of targeted supports. While this is a significant concern and an area of focus for the district, we are hopeful that the new organizational approach that we described at the last school committee meeting in organizing our schools into school support learning networks with differentiated levels of support targeted to the needs of schools, that that will dovetail well with the support we now need to provide. We will go into greater detail on how we will support our highest-need schools in a subsequent meeting, although we'll touch lightly on it tonight. I do want to point out that we do have continued serious work to do to combat some district-wide trends that should give us all concern and are, again, an area of focus for all of us to be working on. I'll just highlight briefly that in I'll just highlight briefly, that includes science learning at all levels, but particularly in grades three to eight. Progress for our English learners, while our former English learners continue to do exceedingly well, our current English learners need additional attention and focus from our teaching and learning efforts. This is work that Dr. Charles Granson and his team at ASSET continue to focus on. In addition to that, continued achievement gaps for our most marginalized students remain a concern, and this is a concern across academic, school support, our opportunity gaps office, and our equity office. And then the fourth major area of ongoing focus, also a new indicator in the system, is chronic absenteeism. So, those are some of the things we will be working on. But with that, let me turn it over to Mary to share the results and educate us all about the new system, which is not uncomplicated.
Look forward to it. So, good evening, Chairperson LaCanto and members of the school committee. I'm the interim executive director of data and accountability. Thank you for inviting us here this evening to share a presentation on the 2018 State Assessment and Accountability Results for the Boston Public Schools. This presentation is going to review data for the district, as well as individual schools, including the 2018 accountability results, spring 2018 MCAS results, and school year 2017 2018 access for ELL results. Please note that unless otherwise noted in this presentation, district summary data does not include data for the Horace Mann Charter Schools, in keeping with how the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education presents data for Boston. So, in 2018, the state launched a new accountability system for districts and schools. Some of the most significant changes include transitioning from classifying performance according to five accountability levels to utilizing four accountability categories. Districts are also now categorized based on their own overall performance against targets, rather than categorized based on the lowest performing school in the district. There's also been a shift to categorizing the top performing 85% of schools based on performance against targets for all students and the lowest performing 25% of students in a school. And there's a focus on raising the performance of each district's or school's lowest performing students, that's a 25% group I just mentioned, rather than on gap narrowing. Additionally, the new system includes several new indicators of student performance. Due to these significant changes from the prior system to this new accountability system, the state advises against comparing the 2018 accountability designations and percentiles to those from prior years. Last year, sorry, the new system includes measures in five different indicator categories, including achievement, student growth, high school completion, English language proficiency, and other additional indicators. For 2018 reporting, targets are set for one year for the all students and lowest performing student subgroups. And schools earn zero to four points for each measure, depending on whether performance declined, was unchanged, improved but did not yet meet the target, met the target, or exceeded the target. The state weighs the various indicators differently depending on the grade span within the school. Regardless, achievement is by far the most consequential indicator, accounting for 60% of a school's score that serves grades three to eight, and 40% of a school's score that serves high school grades. And this is due to the inclusion of the additional indicator for high school completion. Last year, BPS as a district was categorized as a Level IV district. Our district has been classified as partially meeting targets for 2018, with a target percentage of 58%. Districts and schools are classified into accountability categories based on a normative component and a criterion reference component. So, criterion referenced component measures performance against those individual targets, and the normative component measures the performance of students in a school compared to other schools in the state. The measure is reported as percentile from 1 to 99 and is calculated using all available accountability indicators for a school. Importantly, districts do not receive accountability percentiles. Beginning in 2018, school results are reported in two categories. So, either schools requiring assistance or intervention and schools without required assistance or intervention. A school that was previously designated as underperforming Level IV or chronically underperforming Level V, under the new accountability system, is categorized as requiring broad comprehensive support. A school may be designated as requiring focused targeted support if one or more of the following is true. So, the school has been, has not been identified as requiring broad comprehensive support, but still has an accountability percentile below 10. The school has a low graduation rate, or the school has a low subgroup percentile or low test participation rate for one or more subgroups or for all students. Schools with accountability percentiles above 10, for which none of those factors are true, are categorized based on the school's progress towards improvement targets. Schools that earn zero to 74% of points against targets are categorized as partially meeting targets, and the performance of these schools is generally improving relative to the targets set for them by the state, but the school on average is not yet meeting those targets. And then lastly, schools earning 75% or more of points against targets are designated as meeting targets. The performance of these schools is improving sufficiently enough for the school to meet most or all of the targets set for them by the state. And you can see an additional designation, which the superintendent mentioned. So, within the meeting targets category, a small group of schools are recognized each year based on the demonstration of high achievement, improvement, or growth. So, you can see on this slide, the distribution of 2018 accountability designations for our schools. You'll see that we had 23 BPS schools that were classified as meeting targets, 29 schools classified as partially meeting targets. The largest group at 40 BPS schools is for those classified as in need of focused or targeted support. And again, these schools are designated for one or more factors. So, lowest performing 10% statewide, graduation rate that is below 66.7%, one or more subgroups in the lowest performing 5% of subgroups statewide, or one or more subgroups that has a test participation rate below 95%. The table at the bottom of this slide shows a de-duplicated count of the reasons BPS schools were classified for focused or targeted support. So, of the 40 schools, 27 are in the bottom 10% statewide, and the remaining 13 schools in the category have low graduation rate, low subgroup performance, low assessment participation rates, or a combination of those indicators. There's a considerable range of need within this category. Nine BPS schools were designated as in need of broader comprehensive support. Those are the schools that were formerly known as Level IV or Level V schools. No new schools were identified for broader comprehensive support in 2018. And that last group to the right is for schools with insufficient data. So, these are schools that did not have sufficient data to calculate an accountability percentile or earn a designation. These are schools that are primarily early education centers or schools with special The appendix to this presentation includes the 2018 accountability percentile and performance against targets for every BPS school, including our Horace Mann Charter Schools. I also wanted to review some, several highlights, which the superintendent touched on. For example, the district met our English Language Arts achievement targets for all students in grades three to eight, and for lowest performing students in grades three to eight and high school. But most notably, I wanted to mention several schools whose accomplishments we should highlight. So, the John Winthrop School exited Level IV status this year. It's one of only four schools across the state to do so. The school is now designated as meeting targets, and it has earned 79% of its target points. In addition, two schools received the designation of being a school of recognition. These two schools are amongst just 52 across the state identified for exceptional achievement, improvement, or growth. So, Winship Elementary School was identified for exceeding targets, earning 98% of possible target points. And the Joseph Manning was named as a school of recognition for exceeding targets, earning 96% of possible target points, as well as for high growth. So, the state considers a mean student growth percentile of 60 or higher to constitute high growth. For the Manning, their English Language Arts mean SGP was 67, and their math mean SGP was 71, which is quite high. Many other BPS schools demonstrated strong progress against targets, and I've listed here some of those schools just for additional recognition. Despite those areas that we wanted to highlight and celebrate for BPS schools, as a district, we still have some significant areas of concern that need to be addressed. Specifically, district performance was lowest on some of the newest accountability indicators. So, progress toward English proficiency on the Access for ELLs exam declined, and chronic absenteeism increased for grades three to eight, as well as for high school. Additionally, the proportion of 11th and 12th grade students completing advanced coursework declined from 2017 to 2018. In terms of subject matter performance, science is of particular concern with low performance across grades tested. And lastly, historically marginalized student groups made less progress against targets than the district as a whole. We've disaggregated MCAS data by subgroup throughout the remainder of this presentation, which lays bare these persistent achievement gaps. Before diving into the 2018 MCAS results, just a few words on accountability classifications for those schools requiring assistance or intervention. So, this table lists the nine schools that remain in broad comprehensive support, as well as the John Winthrop School, which exited its status as underperforming school this year. In addition to those nine schools, the district is developing plans to support the 40 schools requiring focused targeted support. We know that for this group in particular, there's a wide range of need from those schools identified due to being in the bottom 10% of schools statewide, to schools identified for assistance due to having test participation rates below 95%. All BPS schools, including those identified for state assistance and intervention, have developed 90-day action plans that are informed by this and other data. Integrated into those plans are commitments for tailored support from central office liaisons. BPS is also coordinating with the state to develop additional differentiated supports. This approach is consistent with the differentiated network support model that the district rolled out for schools this year. We will coordinate with the state to clarify the support structure and return, as the superintendent mentioned, to give a fuller presentation on that process at a November school committee So, now I'll move on to the spring 2018 Next Generation MCAS results for grades three through eight. Two highlights in the grades three to eight MCAS results include the overall strong performance in English Language Arts and strong performance by former English learners who generally outperformed the all-student subgroup. Digging more deeply into grades three to eight English Language Arts MCAS results by grade level, one can see that student achievement, measured by average scaled score, ranges from 488.4 to 493.7 by grade level. The average scaled score for all students in English Language Arts was 491.1. A minimum scaled score of 500 indicates that a student is meeting expectations. So, while a few grade levels approach this threshold, on average, none quite attain it. Similarly, examining the farthest to the right column, which shows the mean student growth percentile, the target for schools is a student growth percentile of 50 or higher. Grade five surpasses this target, while overall growth across grades three to eight is just below at 49.3. Achievement and growth also vary by student group, demonstrating that our achievement gaps remain a clear concern. So, former English learners, white students and Asian students have average scaled scores above 500, while the average scaled score for students with disabilities is 474.7. Mean student growth percentile is also variable by subgroup, ranging from a low of 43.7 to a high of 55.4 by subgroup for grades three to eight English Language Arts. Moving on to math, next-gen mathematics performance by grade level, one can see that student achievement, which is measured by average scaled score, ranges from 486.7 to 490.6 by grade level. Again, grade five is a standout for growth with a mean student growth percentile of 53.2, while the overall math student growth percentile for grades three to eight was Looking at next-gen math performance by subgroup, we see similar variability in achievement and growth as we did for English Language Arts, with almost no subgroup having a mean student growth percentile of 50 or higher. The average scaled score for all students is 488.9, which is about 11 points below that minimum score for meeting expectations. As you can see from these slides, our achievement gap remains a concern across content areas. Moving on to, moving on to science, you'll notice that the metrics shared are different than for English Language Arts and Mathematics, and that's due to the fact that the 2018 science tests were legacy MCAS assessments. So, for instance, this table summarizes average composite performance index, or CPI, for achievement, and the percentage of students who are proficient or advanced, rather than the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations. A CPI, or composite performance index chart, is presented at the bottom of this slide for reference. The mean CPI for grade five science was 57.3, which places the average in the needs improvement range. Grade five science mean CPI varied from 43.4 to 75.3 by subgroup. Looking at grade eight science performance, both from an achievement gap perspective and overall performance, we can see that science continues to be an area of significant concern and focus for the district. I'm going to move on to reviewing the spring 2018 grade 10 MCAS results. So, while analysis focused on average scaled score for the next-gen MCAS, we're primarily focusing on the percentage of students who are proficient or advanced on the grade 10 legacy MCAS. And this is due to the competency determination, graduation requirements, which require that students earn a scaled score of at least 240, which is the minimum score to be considered proficient, on the grade 10 MCAS ELA and Mathematics tests, and a scaled score of at least 220, which is the minimum score for needs improvement on one of the high school MCAS science assessments. For grade 10 ELA, which you see here, there was no meaningful change in the proficiency rate from 2017 to 2018 for all students, and minimal change by race or ethnicity. We did see some improvements on the grade 10 ELA MCAS for students with disabilities, improving from 50% proficient advanced in 2017 to 54% in 2018, and for the EL and former EL subgroup, which improved from 58% to 65% proficient or advanced in 2018. Turning to grade 10 math, we see that overall, there is a two percentage point decline in the proportion of students who are proficient or advanced in 2018 compared to 2017. While the performance of most racial and ethnic groups was relatively flat, the proficiency rate for Asian students increased two percentage points in 2018. Racial and ethnic achievement gaps widened slightly from 2017 to 2018 with consideration of proficiency rates. Achievement gaps also persist in grade 10 math by student subgroup, with 26% of students with disabilities and 57% of economically disadvantaged students proficient or advanced, which is compared to about two-thirds of all students. An improvement highlight is the EL and former EL subgroup, again, which experienced a four percentage point increase in 2018. For grade 10 science, the district experienced a five percentage point increase from 2017 to 2018, with all racial and ethnic groups also improving from 2017. Proficiency rates do vary significantly by race and ethnicity and are still low overall in science, with 54% of all students proficient or advanced. Again, the EL and former EL student subgroups made the largest gains in proficiency, improving from 23% to 32%, so still some room to grow. Students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students also improved, though the average, on average, all subgroups still have room for continued progress in science. Finally, I will briefly summarize performance on the 2017-2018 access for ELLs assessment. The state engaged in a standard-setting process leading into the 2016-2017 school year. As such, it is not advisable to compare access data beyond the two most recent school years, which is why you only see two years of data here. As seen in this chart, the proportion of students at each English Language proficiency level has been relatively stable over the past two years, but the proportion of students at the two lowest English Language proficiency levels increased from 33% to 37% of English The new state accountability system also includes, as mentioned, an indicator on making progress towards English proficiency. The progress towards English Language proficiency metric is measured by calculating the percentage of students who meet annual targets that get them to English proficiency in six years, based on results on the access for ELLs assessment. The methodology for this metric changed in 2018 to an individual student target approach, rather than a growth to proficiency model that's been used in previous years. Performance for the district is summarized- Performance for the district is summarized in our accountability system for non-high school and high school grades, and performance on this indicator is an area of concern for the district, as a proportion of students making adequate progress declined in both grade spans to 53.7 and 25.6, respectively. That includes my presentation. I realize that was a wealth of information in a short period of time. I appreciate your attention at this late hour, and our team welcomes the opportunity to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you, Ms. Dillman. That was indeed a very lengthy presentation, but we always know each year when you come to us and your office comes to us to talk about these results, it's important to pack this information at a very granular level, and I think you've done a great job in giving that to us. I'm going to open it up now to the committee for questions and discussion. All right, start with Dean Robinson, please.
Thank you. It was a lot of information. I wonder if, moving forward, we have almost bite-sized pieces, because I was taking so many notes, and then I, you know, I realized there was even more information, and I ran out of room. So just maybe moving forward, if we think about ways to present this information. So I think first is a comment, or maybe just an observation. Slide eight is really critical, accountability in areas for growth. Superintendent, I think this is, you know, almost, this slide can be marching orders for the district. Slide eight clearly communicates what we need to be really strategically thinking about and implementing. I also think Mr. LaCanto and Ms. Oliver Davila, for the superintendent search, this is also an area to focus on, someone with this type of experience, and not just scratching the surface, but really making significant progress. I do have a question, and I guess it's more for the district. I'm just troubled with the focus of science being such a strong area of concern, with so many partnerships and resources around us. I know we don't have all the answers here tonight, but I would wonder, number one, do we know, you know, particularly the top five science partnerships either we currently have or we could think about moving forward to help address this issue? So I want to start with the science being an area of concern.
So Dr. Charles Grantson, our interim chief academic officer, is here, but let me just start out by saying that this is a clear and present focus for us. The acute focus, while our science performance overall is not strong, it is much more robust and in a workable place at the science level. These are our grades three to eight science results that are of grave concern. And while partnerships are always valuable, I would say that our primary focus right now is on our core business of teaching and learning in science. This is not about partnerships which are additive. This is about Boston Public Schools refocusing on its core business of teaching and learning, particularly strengthening its academic focus. Science is not as frequently taught as a separate subject. It's not, it has not been supported in many ways by a number of instructional strategies and curricular resources over the past several years. It fights for space on the real estate of our calendars. There's lots of different ways for us to attack and approach this. And Charles, if there's anything you want to add, I think partnerships come after that, but there is some very core work we need to do.
Thank you, and thanks, Dean Robinson, for highlighting this for us, and it definitely is an area of focus and concern, especially my first two months in this role, looking at the review of asset and academics and professional learning, how we actually support schools, and looking at the clear through line between the work we're doing in central office and the impact on schools. I'll share a quick story of a visit to elementary school. Last week, walked in, the principal said, "I'm going to take you into this classroom. This is an area that's going to really test my leadership as a principal." And we walked in, and there were young people all around, moving around, and not because they were engaged in exciting science activity, but because there was not a commander of the classroom and the teacher needed support and help. And so I found myself on the floor, helping young people, taking pencils that weren't being used in the right way. And when I talked to the teacher, she said, "You know, I don't even know their names. This is the second or third time I've actually met with them as a group," right? And this was a fourth-grade classroom. And so when we think about, we know there's great things happening in a lot of our classrooms. This is an area where, if it's only happening once a week, we're going to have difficulty reaching that goal and seeing movement there. And so one of the things we're doing with academics and professional learning overall is looking at how we reorganize resources. We've done that sort of on the school support side with this new school supports model. Then, in the asset realm, how we sort of also reorganize the resources so that we can actually deploy supports to teachers in schools and principals. And then how we look at how we provide sort of a recommendation to schools around how they organize their master schedules, because once a week is going to make it challenging. We see it two to three days in the middle schools as well.
So logistics are really important. So, and I want to just clarify, when I talk about partnerships, there are two different partnerships that I was referring to. One are organizations, because this is a resource-rich city. And it may be additive, but having their voices at the table as to how they can come alongside to, you know, to help support instruction could be important. But the other partnership that I wanted to refer to are colleges and universities. The reason why this jumps out at me, I had a conversation just last week with a professor from Olin College, and that's a premier engineering school. And he talked about the difference between engineers at Olin and engineers at MIT. And he talked about the curricular focus that they have that is very different. And he talked about the kind of employees that Olin produces that's different than MIT or Wentworth. For me, that was really interesting, because I'm raising a budding engineer. She identified four years ago, when she was in first grade, that she wants to be a civil engineer. So I had to become really, you know, a student of civil engineer. So whenever I meet an engineer, I ask them specific questions about their K-8 experiences, about their, you know, love of learning. So when I talk about partnerships, it's not necessarily an additive, as much as it can also help to inform our curricular focus. I think your background's history, correct? Okay. So if history were where our students are lacking, if you walk into a history classroom, because that's formative to your educational experience, you would probably have some very quick, you know, pieces of insight to provide either the curricular focus, the way that, the way it's being taught, things of that nature. So when I talk about partnerships, I know it may, you know, for some, may seem to be an additive component, but I think it should be a critical, at least, thought process to think about some of those content experts, because what I've heard from professors, and earlier when I pointed to, you know, Dr. Coleman and asked him some specific questions, I know when people are experts in their field, it's, when the topic is at hand, I see it as just, you know, a critical moment to hear that information. And even though this was a passing conversation I had with an engineering professor, it stuck with me for a while, because he specifically said, "We have hundreds of students at Olin that look very different, and the jobs that they have look very different than other engineering schools." And that piqued my interest. One of the other things that he said, as maybe a potential partnership, is his, they have students at Olin whose project that year is to create fourth-grade science projects. And then they bring in fourth graders from the area schools to help judge and to help. For me, I'm seeing that linkage, right, of how we connect the classroom to real-life experiences. So when I'm talking about partnerships, that's why I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to ask the question, if it's such a great area of concern and we have resources around us, you know, are there creative ways that we can think outside the boxes as to how we can address it?
And we'll definitely continue to explore that.
Yeah. And Dean Robinson, just to add to that, so partnerships are incredibly important, but I think in this case, my remarks are really about underscoring how central this needs to be to the core work of our academics department, as well as leveraging partnerships, because there is definitely a lot of work to do. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. So then another question, because this is impacting fifth grade and eighth grade, what have the conversations been with fifth and eighth grade teachers around this data? Or has there been any conversations just around where they may see the challenges with the students and how their voice can lead this process moving forward?
I mean, I think it's a recognition of, again, I can't emphasize enough, the instructional time piece. When we think about how we make an impact on outcomes in just teaching and learning for young people, I like to sort of put it in a framework of, we can look at changing the conditions of learning, and that can be what's taught, how well it's taught, and when it's taught, and who teaches it. And so one of the key pieces around what's taught is the curriculum, and there's been a number of things that we piloted. FOS, for example, is something that's been piloted in the UVA schools this year. There were discovery education curriculum modules that were piloted in a few schools in the spring, and teachers have given feedback on those throughout the, over the summer. A number of teachers have also developed, worked with us to develop standards online curriculum over the summer as well. But when we look at how to try to bring this to scale and try to reach as many classrooms and schools as possible, that's where the piece around how well it's taught and the professional development opportunities that they are. And so access to principals, that's one of the pieces of feedback I've gotten from content directors in the science department. They need access to principals, and there's opportunities for that in our new network model, where there's smaller groups of principals, and the science directors can go directly to them, so that they know what they're holding teachers accountable for. And then there's also more opportunities to get teacher leaders in schools who can help work with their peers and colleagues to help improve. And then, when, the last condition around when it's taught, this instructional time piece, I think it is a district responsibility to really provide sort of a roadmap for, you know, we have, we have school autonomy, we love our school autonomy in our system, but what are the guardrails and what are the recommendations, and when we're not meeting students' needs academically? Science, like many other content areas, it builds on itself, right? It gets more complex as the grade levels increase. And so how do we plan for excellence and plan for success by making sure that we increase that instructional time?
With the schools that have, you know, exited status, the schools that, you know, have been deemed kind of the shining stars, are we kind of performing a bit of an autopsy to really hear from the school leader, the school staff, the teachers, as to the specific steps that they took, so that the other schools could potentially do what you're referring to, Dr. Grantson, the where and the when and the how? Are you performing that kind of autopsy, and I don't want to call it autopsy, because it sounds like they're dead, they're very much, investigation, they're very much alive, a deeper analysis of the schools to serve almost as a roadmap?
Definitely something that we're doing as a team, and not only in asset, but also in the student supports team. And as a part of the review that I'm doing, these are opportunities to sort of share these sort of bright spots and things that are going well, and to sort of provide, again, how do we provide sort of the recommendations or keys to success that we recommend to other schools across the district?
And is it happening, or will it happen, leader to leader, teacher to teacher, from school to school? Because sometimes, you know, I see that peer support, peer mentoring could sometimes be a bit more effective than it feeling like it's a bit top-down. Is that an opportunity that you could consider?
Absolutely, and I know that many of the networks, the leaders are visiting one another's schools, they're doing those instructional rounds, and they're having the opportunity to sort of debrief and reflect as a group. I know that some networks are even doing cross-network visits to schools, and in all of our efforts in asset, we try to connect teachers. I just had a teacher at the Hernandez who needed a, who had a specific need in meeting the needs of English learners, and we connected a teacher with a teacher from the Umana, and so all the way across the city. It doesn't mean that there aren't great teachers in those buildings who can help one another, but you can always learn more, and there are people who are doing great things in specific areas.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Mr. O'Neill.
Mr. Chair, so thank you for this presentation. I honestly and truly believe we are only on an effective board if we are setting the conditions for the district to positively impact student achievement. I don't shy away from accountability, I know my peers here don't as well, though we also like the fact when the accountability tools are improving. And I think DESI has done a job here in being more nuanced in how they look at our schools and how they look at our students versus the blunt instrument that they used to use of MCAT results, MCAS results. And so this is really worthwhile for us to understand well and to be briefed on regularly, and to use this as tools in how we provide supports to the schools that need additional support. And I appreciate Dean Robinson pointing out, you know, talking about science in the city, right? Those are the jobs of the future, so we should be intently focused on that, probably more than some other districts may be, because that's the jobs that, whether it's in the hospital district, the financial district, the innovation district, those are the jobs for our students. We lead in so many industries where science is critical. I want to make just one quick comment that, and it's following up on what Dean Robinson said, I agree with you. Page eight to me is an eye-opener, and I would like to point out one thing that you didn't mention that was really eye-opening to me, because it's a base thing that superintendent and your team would love to hear, what are we doing about it? Because if our students aren't in school, they're not in a position to learn. And to see those chronic absenteeism numbers, you know, going up to 19.7 in grades three to eight, and the definition you had on previous pages, 10 days or more of absenteeism, right?
It's 10% or more, so in a 180-day school year, it'd be 18 days of membership.
Oh, 10% plus, okay, yeah, so that's a lot of days. And the high school numbers, mind-boggling. If our students aren't in school, and that's not even saying tardy, that's absent, right?
Yep, so it's any excused or unexcused absence.
They're not in school, they can't learn. What are we doing about an initiative around that? That strikes me as something that is more of a controllable factor.
And Dr. Grantson can add on to this, because this is work that happens across the district, but particularly through the social-motional learning department. But chronic absenteeism is a major flag for us, and as you may recall, it's also highlighted in the Parthenon Off-Track Youth Report around high schools, but as these data show us, it is a significant issue across grade levels, and actually, interestingly, has peaks in the early grades, and then dips, and then peaks up as we head into those middle and high school years. So it is an area of focus around opportunity youth. It is led by, some of the work is led by Brian Marks, our Director of Opportunity Youth. One of the strategies is also related to, and that's the department that oversees our attendance officers for the district. The work we are doing at present is really drilling down with school-based support in training around a focus on chronic absenteeism. So we had Dr. Robert Balfens, who many of you know is one of the key leaders of work around early warning indicators, meeting with our staff, our school-based staff here at Bowling, as well as central office staff, and really drilling in on chronic absenteeism around strategies for districts. So this is work that we're doing both at the central office and the school-based level, but there is a lot more work for us to do. Another strategy has been the reorganization of the Reengagement Center. This would be focused on our older youth. This is a long-term collaboration with the Private Industry Council. But again, as part of the recommendations that came out of the Parthenon report, one of our early moves was to bring that more closely into BPS while still working in collaboration. That staff now reports here with additional collaborative staffing support from the Private Industry Council. As an example, this year, on the day before school, that team organized a group of volunteers from central office to go door-knocking on not just our dropped-out youth, but now our chronically absent youth as well. So we've started including chronic absenteeism and those students already dropped out as a a focus of the rec center's work. There is much more we can do here, and Dr. Grandson should feel free to jump in, but I can say that it is not just based on these indicators, but what we already know about lost time, one of our focus areas for this year.
Mr. O'Neill, if I might just interject as well, and thank you Superintendent Peril for talking a little bit about what the district's been doing to date and some of the responses that we've seen with respect to chronic absenteeism being highlighted in the Parthenon report. I'll also note that chronic absenteeism is one of the selected factors that the Commonwealth and the Department of Education chose to highlight as part of one of the additional factors that can be considered under the directions that each state receives from the federal government on the implementation of ESSA. And so, I think it's important for us to understand as well what kind of supports and what kind of direction that the state might be providing for us on chronic absenteeism, since it has been chosen as one of those focus areas. And I don't think you, it didn't sound like you had anything within your comments there, Superintendent, with respect to what the state's guidance might be on this, but is it fair to say that we might be expecting at some point in the near future some guidance on that as well?
I imagine so. To date, the initial focus of our work with DESI is understandably focused on the rollout of the overall new accountability system, and in particular, the new designations of schools needing support. But within that, as we begin to dig in more closely, particularly those schools that are flagged for chronic absenteeism, and I expect that that will center a number of our conversations. And then, to your point, because the state chose this as one of its factors, while we're in deep agreement, because as many of you have just said, we cannot deliver the academic content if our children are not here to learn. So, we are hoping that the state will have resources there as well, but there are a variety of resources already available, so we'll be drawing on all of them.
Very good, thank you, and pardon me for interrupting.
Yes, so, no problem, Mr. Chair, and thank you for highlighting that. Just as about ten years ago, this district decided to concentrate resources across the board on the dropout issue in the high school graduation rate, and when we put every attention on that, from holding school leaders accountable, to getting them data earlier on, to the re-engagement center, to credit recovery, to summer graduations, you name it, when we made it part of our vernacular to change the conversation, as studying what the cost to dropouts were, cost to society about dropouts, et cetera, we have been nationally leading in our results in that. It would strike me that work around chronic absenteeism is so core to the work that we're doing, to help students understand the impact of it, to help families understand the impact of it, what it leads to as an early warning indicator, but also helping school leaders understand how it impacts their school's results. This is, this strikes me as something that is ripe for another all-hands-on-deck and gets talked about across the board, including our students with disabilities. It'd be interesting to see what the subsets are of students that have higher chronic absenteeism, but this strikes me as something that is calling out for a wide concerted effort in getting support from foundations and business community, and you name it, on the impact this is having on the results of our students.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Ms. Oliver Davila.
Good, don't get me started. Mr. O'Neill, you opened, okay, I just want to-
I hope in a good way.
In a good way, in a good way. No, I mean, I think that, before I even go to my other comments, I think you're right in what you're saying, and I think there's a great opportunity for us to really look at how our school, our high schools are currently designed. We talk about Bill BPS as well, because we have many schools that are trying to do something for everyone, and they don't have the resources. So, we really need to look at students that are old and close, and young and far, and young and close, what are, all those different categories, I think. Our schools can't do everything, so I think there's an opportunity. And also with Bill BPS, again, going back to the college and career readiness is another opportunity. I mean, why our students aren't going to school, there's many reasons, and one of them is, can you really see the future? Can you really see yourself in this economy, working in Boston? Well, if you don't have access to an internship, if you don't have access to dual enrollment, you don't really see yourself, you don't see that you're actually going to get something from graduation. So, I agree with you, I think there's huge opportunities. There are also a lot of partners who work with schools, and, you know, I can talk about just in my own work, that there are schools that are very, they are very collegial, and they share data with us. And so, we are able to work with families much earlier on, starting in sixth grade, looking at attendance. You can look at those things way, way early. And so, I think also including our partners and making sure that, when appropriate, that information and data is shared, because some schools are great at that, and some schools are not. And I think we have this wealth of partners that are just trying to work with families. We're all in this together, we're all really at the, we have the same end goal. So, I agree, I think there's a ton of opportunities. For me, this slide eight also, I saw in terms of the progress towards English proficiency, and I wanted to ask if you could talk a little bit more about that. I mean, especially when I look at the high school decline, I mean, it's, they both went down, but really, particularly in high school, it's a big drop, and if you could talk a little bit about why? Because all this past year, there's been a lot of reorganization, and we are throwing all, you know, we have an asset team, and we're doing all of these different things, and so, for me, I'm wondering why, why we have gone down.
Priya's going to come up as well, and I just want to start by saying that this is an area, especially where there's been a change in sort of a calculation for the state, we want to sort of better understand, you know, our, what we thought we were doing better than we were. And I think when you look at a number of the subgroups, especially for English learners, understanding the importance, again, of that standards-aligned instruction, and having quality curriculum materials, and having access to teachers to be able to provide them the support that they need to be successful. We've done, as you just mentioned, the sort of rearranging of things, and this new school support model, we believe is going to allow us to, again, every network having those liaisons, where the academic superintendent can deploy and support principals as the needs are identified, and then the ninety-day action plans. Those are the really sort of two key pieces we see as, what's going to be different this year in terms of how we're going to actually, like, meet the needs of principals, teachers, and students. I'll allow Priya to go into sort of greater detail about some of the work we've also been doing.
Good evening, Chairman Locanto, Superintendent Peril, and members of the school committee. Thank you for having us here today. First, I just want to say that we're very excited that the making progress towards English proficiency indicator is now included as part of the state accountability system, so that EL students' progress is now something that we're all explicitly held accountable for, so we are very excited about that. Yes, we have seen a decline in this measure for the district between 2017 and 2018. I do want to speak a little bit more about that calculation and how we're trying to better understand it. So, DESI changed the methodology for calculating this indicator, and it is fairly complicated. It sends individual targets for students based on attaining English proficiency within six years, and taking into account their ELD level and their time in Massachusetts. So, for instance, a student who was an ELD one last year in his first year in Massachusetts will have a different target than an ELD student who has been here for four years. If the student has met this target, they are considered as making progress. New this year, DESI also took into account a difficulty index, meaning how much growth a student would need to have made to meet that target. So, in doing that, in the switching of methodologies between 2018 and 2019, they needed to be able to compare 2017 to 2018. So, the state recalculated the 2017 progress results using that new method, but it was not posted on Edwin. So, to be very honest, and I'm not saying this to make excuses, but to be very honest, we really are trying to analyze these results further and really better understand them, because this new methodology comes with like a change in methodology last year, as well as changing of the standards on the access annual English language proficiency test. So, overall, it's making it more difficult, we can't tell what's the measure to. Either way, however, even if those results had been the same, they aren't, or better, they still aren't good enough, right? So, at the end of the day, we don't want to see that only fifty-three or fifty-seven percent of our students, or thirty-seven percent of our students are making progress towards English language proficiency. So, we will be looking to identify which, as we look at the data more, we'll be looking to see which Ls are not making sufficient progress, and which schools need the most targeted support, to see if it aligns with the current structure that we have set out to provide support to schools. We'll also be looking to identify if there are specific grade levels or language groups where we should better target our supports. And as we dive deeper into this data, we also look to contextualize these trends in the statewide results, which have not been yet released, so that we can better understand, again, where we as a district need to provide more support. So, some of the key initiatives that we are working on this year are the ESL Model Curriculum Units, or MCU's, that were passed by DESI. So, we have been working with teachers to collaborate on this model, ESL curriculum units that align to the EL curriculum, and when I say EL that second time, I'm sorry, I mean Expeditionary Learning Curriculum. So, teachers can better differentiate instruction for English learners based on their multiple ELD level, so really getting very granular into the curriculum and saying, how does this look different for every single ELD level? So, we are working with a group of teachers not only to write those units, but to implement the current units that DESI has provided, and start to roll those out and implement them. We are actually going into schools with those teachers to help support them, look at those lessons, and then we are modifying the units as we see what worked and what didn't work. As we are modifying and perfecting those units, we're also simultaneously creating new units with groups of teachers this year, many of whom were trained by DESI to create these units in the original curation of the Model Curriculum Units. Also, with the passage of the Look Act, I really am hopeful that we will be able to see a shift in moving towards English language proficiency, and one of the things that we have done is invest in native language resources this past year. And so, we've been providing teacher-curated native language resources, as well as, you know, existing resources and professional development on how to provide them to students to give them additional access points to grade-level content while they're in the process of learning English. So, we're also providing additional supplemental resources, such as Imagine Learning, Lexia, NearPod, which is specifically for our English learners with disabilities, so we're trying to provide specific targeted support for different aspects. So, for example, one of the areas we had identified as being an issue previously was in math, and so, when we use Imagine Math in our supplemental programs, that is meant to help support those students in their math development, specifically for English learners. Also, we have English 3D, which is a targeted curriculum specifically at our long-term English learners, so we are continuing with that. This is our second year in that, and we are still looking to see how we can better implement that in more schools. And we are also, you know, the PD for our language acquisition team facilitators continues to go on to norm the process of determining students' ELD levels at the end of the year, so that we, even in the district, before the MCAS results come out, have a better idea if our ELD levels standard-setting process within our district is more normed, that we might have a better idea even before the results come out of which students are making progress and which students are not. And then, finally, we continue to fund schools and CBO partners to provide out-of-school time programming specific to our English learners. So, these are just some of the things that we're trying to do, but again, as we analyze the results further and figure out where those areas are of need, we will provide further intervention, and we'll also be able to see if some of the interventions that we did implement were working or not.
So, I'll just quickly add to that, that one of the things, Priya and her team do great work, and one of the things we are continuing to look at is how we take a lot of the things we've been doing in terms of pilots, or with smaller groups of teachers, and bring them to scale. How do we use asset resources appropriately in order to skillfully navigate school autonomy, skillfully navigate less opportunities or decreasing opportunities to have direct access to principals, to have, sort of empower them to be engaged leaders of English language learners, learning? And so, you know, one of the things I would say, as a former principal in Springfield, I founded one of the first English learners' academies in that city. It was not an expertise area of mine when I went in, but it was once I left. And I, and I, because of the number of students and the number of languages we had, I had no choice, and I was happy to embrace that. So, how do we, how do we get principals to further own that work?
And thank you for saying that, Priya. It escaped me to say that, but I agree with your comments on that it's great to see it in the accountability, and I agree, and I'm sorry if my question came out. I know there's been a lot of work, so, but my, you know, my, in trying to understand with all of that work happening, I guess I also want to understand, you know, what is still missing? What are the resources? You know, that, obviously, we have all this professional development, you know, we reorganized several times, and so, at the end of the day, you know, when we take a deep look at this, like, what is not connecting, and what are, what further resources do we need? And I'm glad that you mentioned the principals, because, you know, and it's a whole school thing. I mean, I think we, we all need to own, you know, our ELLs, and everybody really should be, you know, certified in the ELL, but that's my own thing. So, thank you for saying all of that. I wanted to ask about, in the, in the data, there is a comparison of former ELs versus never ELs, and you compared FELs with a category that includes ELLs and FELs, which is not a clean comparison, so I wanted to ask if we could get those figures on slide eleven? Oh, should I ask you? Sorry.
Oh, no, since I'm right up here, I can answer. I know that they, the Office of Data and Accountability is working to further disaggregate these based on not just that suggestion, but several, you know, previous suggestions from the ELL Task Force on how we can better disaggregate this data, and that will be presented at our ELL Task Force meeting.
Great, because there were slides on here where it was disaggregated, so that's great. So, if they could mirror the ones you had, like, thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, but then not in like twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four? So, if those could be mirrored, because then we're not actually getting comparison, that would be great.
Absolutely, that data's also included, the disaggregation, I think you're referring to the grade ten data-
Yeah.
-in the appendix-
Okay, sorry, I might have missed it.
-between those groups, as well as by ELD level, but we'll ensure that we follow up with a similar representation-
Yeah, that would be great. Sorry, it's a lot of charts.
It's many, yes, thank you.
And I'm sorry, but I have to ask these questions, because our student rep had to go home, because she actually has to do homework, and she was getting a little sick. So, she did ask me to ask these questions, which I will just ask, and then you can get back to her, that would be great. So, she wanted to know, who is held accountable for getting students the resources that they need? Are there action steps towards decreasing stigma? And what are the action steps? And how can we cut down on this high-stakes testing? Which are all really great questions.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Ms. Robinson.
Okay, so, I want to thank you for the report, but I have some of the same frustrations I've had each time this work has come before us. I mean, I think number one thing, Opportunity and Achievement Gap Task Force asked several years ago now that we would get the, disaggregated, to get the data disaggregated, so that instead of looking at black, white, we would begin to understand who we're really talking about. The other issue for me is we keep talking about historically marginalized, marginalized groups. When are we going to stop historically marginalizing them? They are the majority of who our district is, these are the students that we have, they are black and brown, we have very small numbers of white and Latin, and white and Asian students, and so, comparing them when the numbers are so greatly different really doesn't really help us to understand where we're making any movement, because, you know, who are the white students that we serve in the district? And where were they concentrated in schools? When you've got, you know, one thousand there and nine thousand somewhere else. So, we need to, I think, begin to change the line- So we need to, I think, begin to change the language of how we look at this and hold ourselves accountable. Because these kids go to school every day. We're spending a lot of money on teachers. We're putting a lot of money into training, curriculum, and we're not getting any better results. And so what do we know about what's really going on? And when will we take some other drastic measures so that we don't continue to have groups of children showing up year in, year in and year out? And ten, twenty years later, there's no difference in what their outcomes are, yet we've put a lot of effort into this. So I'm not quite sure, you know, how just getting the test data back begins to help us to understand what's really going on in our schools and who we really are trying to held accountable. We've talked about autonomy should be earned and not just given. You know, what do you, you know, and how many times are we having small group testing? Those kids only get to be third graders one year. And if it didn't work, they've moved on. The same thing is we compare one group to, one third-grade group to the next. Those two cohorts could look very drastically different. So even if there is movement one way or the other, if we're not really looking at who are part of those cohorts, what is that telling us? So I guess the question for me is, how do we begin to get data that we can honestly look at and begin to understand what is it that we have to critically roll up our sleeves to do so that the children who come before us in any given year get the best education they can get? Because it's about them. It's not about all the adults. But a lot of adults, as I said over and over again, get a lot of money from this district, and our kids are still left not having what they need. So I just really feel like we've got to figure out how to be honest with ourselves so that this report really starts helping shaping a difference in the lives of the kids that we serve.
I thank you for your comments around how we could improve the way we presented the data and look forward to maybe future conversations or guidance on how to improve that. And in terms of, I'll let Dr. Grantson speak into your, I think, larger question around what to do next once we have a deeper, richer sense of performance based on a more thoughtful disaggregation.
So thank you for the comments and questions. I think this is a passion area of mine as well in terms of better understanding what works in terms of what we do throughout the district. And so a part of what we've committed to doing, an asset as a part of this asset review, which I keep bringing up because I want to drum up the interest in that as we look forward to that presentation, is working with the Office of Data and Accountability to look at performance and then look at by school what curricula is being used and sort of do that asset mapping, if you will. So what curriculum works? And where are we seeing opportunity and achievement gaps closing based on the curriculum that's used in those environments? And that's not, as I mentioned, the conditions of learning earlier, that's not the only sort of variable, but it's an important leverage point. And while we're not mandating curriculum district-wide, what I've heard from principals as we continue to visit schools is, you know, we don't want you to necessarily mandate curriculum, but we would like to know what's working in schools across the system. And so, and we know some schools are getting great results, and some have pointed to different curriculum resources that they're using. So that's going to be one, I think, important step in strategy. Another is around what is a sort of key tenet in terms of educational improvement work. And when we looked at the Off-Track Youth Report and the Early Warning Indicators, we know that we can do better by kids in terms of looking at outcomes and getting outcomes if we know before the stakes are too high whether or not they're learning. So what are the opportunities for formative and ongoing assessment? And assessment doesn't have to be a dirty word, right? How do we sort of take quick dipsticks and know what students are and aren't learning and that allows teachers to make mid-course corrections? So we have a very robust data and assessment system with Illuminate. How is it being used with fidelity across schools? And how are we getting closer to, or and I should say, in some cases, getting back to a system that allows us to compare across all of our schools what students know and what they're able to do? And I think that's the next level of work and thinking as well.
Usually, these test results come out after the kids have moved on to another grade. How do the teachers who had them in the year that they took the test take a look at their own records in terms of how are their kids doing overall? I mean, if they're, if they're finding that their students aren't doing well, what kind of support are they getting to improve? Or do they even actually have a chance to go back and review as they think about what they're teaching or how their teaching strategies move forward to improve for the next year?
I can speak to the assessment data access piece. And then if you want to follow up with what they should do in terms of reflective teaching cycles. So teachers have access to the results for the students if they remain in that school that they tested the previous year. So they'll be able to see even though, for instance, their fifth-grade class has moved on, you know, how those students performed. And they'll also be able to receive those students' prior-year results so that they can understand that data for those students coming in. But as Dr. Grantson mentioned, I think the most important data is our formative data rather than our state assessment data, which is why we've made some considerable changes to that strategy and investments in the last two years. So we just mentioned the interim assessments, which we're entering our third year of a dramatic change. And those assessments, and those have been optional for schools, but we saw that over ninety of our schools last year made the choice to consistently administer those assessments. And so that's because they saw value in those standard-based assessments. Just this year, we've started two new partnerships for comprehensive reading assessments. And so those are administered three times a year. And whereas in the past, we only had those for students in kindergarten and grade three, those are now available, again, optional, but available all the way up to grade twelve. So we, for the first time, teachers in our secondary schools are able at the beginning of the year to understand the reading levels and needs of their students, so that they can respond during the school year. And also the students and parents also have access to that data so that they can use it as feedback during the school year, since we know that formative assessment practices and those results are really what's most critical for moving the needle.
And if I can just say, Ms. Robinson, and thank you. We clearly share your urgency around this, and it is a longstanding challenge. You can hear from the eagerness to dig into this. These are the spring 2018 MCAS results. This represents the last school year, so there is lots to unpack as we roll forward in the work that both Mary is leading from the assessment perspective and Dr. Grantson from the academic side, but also very closely linked to the school support work and the principal support work that happens across our schools. And really, the entire asset department, which represents the life force of the district around teaching and learning. And so unpacking these, digging into them, getting further disaggregated data. These data arrived to our school leaders embargoed in August. And so that's why this very first pass that you see, they were just released on September 27th, is fairly high-level, albeit disaggregated because of the yeoman's work of the Office of Data and Accountability. But we will be continuing to unpack it. But the district has placed an important bet on formative assessment, which provides us real-time useful data over the course of the year. And so that combined with the close look that Dr. Grantson and his team are taking at precisely these issues. These are major guideposts. That's why we put all these points on one slide. It's very clear to us that that is where the focus needs to be. And so that's exactly what we'll be working on.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, thank you. Very complex, deep work. And I know we have a lot to go, so I'll try to keep my questions focused. I'll start with, it looks to me like we all want to be former ELLs, right? That's a group that's really doing something and taking names. And so we'd love to know what's happening in their lives, that they seem to be able to get so much out of our system. Am I reading that right?
Yes, definitely, outperforming the all-students category generally across the board.
So understanding that and getting, capturing that would be helpful for us typically as we think about how to replicate that. The second, and my comments will be mostly on slide number twelve, because, you know, I don't want to do Throughout the Baby with a Bathwater. It's clear that there's been great progress in the district already. And in any theory of change, you know, you're going to win a few games before you make the playoffs. And you have been in the playoffs a couple of seasons before you get the Super Bowl from Philadelphia. We understand that slowness in which you can be successful. What?
Who said one and done? Sorry.
And so when I look at slide twelve, what stands out for me is three, four, and five are doing really well, and then we cave in five, seven, and eight. And that seems to be consistent through. And I'm wondering if we have some theory or understanding, conception about the difference? What happens? Is this, are people not getting into the exam schools, so they're leaving the city? And so our scores plummet? I mean, lots of hypotheses that could be going on. We know our middle schools' data send to be pretty poor, and what's driving that? And so why are we successful early and then fail later? So if you have an answer, I'd love to hear it, but I'd take that later.
So I would say that as we dig into this initially, a few things, and as we begin to talk about BLS in upcoming weeks, engagement, one, in our, during those grades. And so we know, when you look at the data across the state and in other urban centers, the engagement and how you teach and reach young people at those grade levels is more of a challenge. And so questions around what do we do differently in terms of what the classroom looks like? And how are we importantly supporting teachers to be able to do things differently in the classrooms? I would say one of the things also, when we look at the enrollment patterns and trends in just standalone middle schools, but even in terms of some of the K-2 eights and upper grades, resource richness based on our student funding model and how we are able to provide sort of a comprehensive support and resources in those schools with the enrollment challenges are some of the things we've looked at as well initially. And so when you put the two of those pieces together in terms of the lack of resources and also the complexity of educating the middle schooler, which is, you know, not something that I've ever done. I tip my hats off to those who teach and lead at that level. And I think also there's opportunity here to look at the work that's been done the last two years around EFA. And this is the last year of that pilot. And so how, when we talk about, you know, preparing future-ready or 21st century learners, what is, what's the sort of holistic, comprehensive set of experiences we want to provide people access to beyond the ELA math and science? We want them to have language. We want them to have civics. And we want them to have access to cool things like robotics. You know, I went to a school last year actually and visited. And again, you saw, you know, the classroom buzzing in a good way, where young people were just building their robots, and I'm going and I'm asking them questions, right? And they're explaining to me, they're teaching me. Those are the kind of environments you want to see at that age range, especially where folks are tactical learners and want to have those hands-on experiences.
Now, part of me is hoping you were going to say, well, since we've made these significant investments over the past five, six years in early childhood and coherence, and we're beginning to see the advantages of that coming up through grade three, four, and five, and when that grade-five cohort hits sixth grade, we're going to see a big change. That was like, that's my fantasy, but I was hoping to say that. And then the, my last question, and I really, as many people have heard, I'm very excited about the network model. I think that, you know, as that decision was made in the spring to move towards bringing back this focus on networks and focus on improvement, I'm really interested in like to hear what are going to be the leading indicators that we're going to begin to hear, network by network, that progress can be made. So it's not, that we shouldn't be waiting, and the sense of urgency and how we're going to design into the network work, this urgency so that we can begin to see the changes and understand them and see the progress that's being made at the leading indicators so that when we get to these lagging indicators in a year or two, we'll understand what went well and what's been changed. Is that a fair question?
So one of the ways that we are trying to assess the work that's happening in the networks is by, I think you've heard referred a couple of times tonight to the 90-day plan, which is actually what has been all along our quality school plan. And the shift that we made was to detach it from a lot of other compliance documents that made it this big weighty thing that you worked on furiously up until the middle of October and then didn't really return too much after that. And instead, we've asked schools to create just a 90-day or a semester-long plan with very specific targets around just no more than three priorities. And when the academic superintendents go into schools, particularly in the small networks they're going in once a week, that plan is on the table every time they go in. And they're asking school leaders, okay, here are your action steps. Here are the metrics you say you're measuring, whether those action steps are having an effect. Let's, you know, talk about what happened this week, what happened last week. Let's go in some classrooms and actually look for evidence of implementation in the classrooms. And then at the mid-year, we'll be able to do some course corrections based on what the metrics are telling us so far so that the second half of the year, they'll create a second plan based on what they've learned in the first half of the year.
I don't like to overwork people, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to get kind of some kind of a high-level report on that analysis so we can see, build our understanding of how that works.
Absolutely.
And then my last question is actually very selfish, because tomorrow I have to go out to the State Accountability Committee. And we've pushed back on them on a regular basis about this issue of low participation, because there's lots of drivers. And I'm wondering whether we, as a district, want to push back and say, I know our previous Chief of Education really loved lower participation. Is that really a useful data point for us to be judged by, particularly at the high school level? I mean, I understand the importance by subgroup, and there's lots of reasons why we would want to know if the low participation, but a lot of people choosing not to participate, and should we be judged by that? That's my question.
I mean, absolutely. I think one thing that we've thought about a lot as a district is particularly smaller subgroups or smaller schools, where you're talking about the matter of, you know, maybe a handful of students that might have some extenuating circumstances or, you know, parents who've requested that their child opt out of state testing. There is no opt-out provision in the current policy, so those students are still counted against your participation rate. We certainly, as a district, support full participation in the assessments to the extent that that is feasible and supported by parents, but would welcome some exploration of that topic.
But is it a useful data point to really think about, drive the whole school improvement we need? That's...
I mean, so we don't have any schools or subgroups in Boston that have significantly low test participation rates. So in terms of the intentionality of ninety-five percent rather than, say, ninety, I don't think we have much research supporting that that leads to any substantial, you know, gaming of the system, schools intentionally, you know, leaving certain students out. So in terms of its utility to the district, I don't think it would be changed if we, for instance, included some nuance around thinking about parents who'd like to have an opt-out or adjusting that threshold in some way.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. You know, and I actually had a similar question, at least with regard to the subject matter, but maybe a different approach. So the idea of participation rates, particularly with, within subgroups, you know, I remember we had these pretty odd and anomalous results in prior years where, you know, perhaps you'd see a school like Boston Latin fall from tier one to tier two because they had low participation rates in certain subgroups. And so is that still meaningful for the purposes of how schools are apportioned across the four different tier levels here? Is it done in the same way?
Yes. So for schools, they may be classified as districts, as focused or targeted support if they do not meet that test participation rate for any subgroup. We have twenty schools in the district that were identified for low test participation rate, though ten of those were also identified for focused targeted support for other reasons. So for instance, they were in the lowest-performing ten percent of schools statewide, for example. So we do have ten schools that are solely identified for intervention or assistance from the state simply because of, you know, missing that ninety-five percent test participation rate for one or more subgroups.
And I don't want to necessarily minimize what that information may be that, you know, those low participation rates may provide us for... that, you know, the, those low participation rates may provide us for, you know, how we might want to change the way that we go about our, our teaching and learning. But nevertheless, it is fair to say that if we had the rates just a bit higher in each one of those, participation rates specifically within each one of those subgroups, those 10 schools would be on the other side of the ledger.
That's correct. They'd either be in, in some cases, meeting targets, or they'd be in partially meeting targets for those 10 schools.
The beauty of being the chair and going last is everybody else gets to ask the hard-hitting and, you know, very incisive questions. And so I really appreciate the leadership that this committee always takes with respect to holding the district accountable on the data that's presented to us. And I want to, again, call out that the district is holding itself accountable in being so forthcoming, not only in the presentation tonight, but with the wealth of appendices that you provided us, tearing apart this data. And of course, talking about all the additional strategies that you have over the school year to take this data and further internalize it and turn it into strategies for the way in which we approach teaching and learning with our schools. I do want to note, thank you, Dr. Coleman, for calling out the former English language learners that have flipped. Ms. Taliani, I think it would be great to have that as part of the Office of VLL presentation when we have you back in a few months to dive in depth on what it is that we're doing with those, those learners and how we're turning around those results. This isn't the first year. We've heard this on many occasions, but I think it would be great for us to understand, you know, what's some of the secret sauces that goes into the achievement within that group. I, I did want to ask one other question. And, you know, again, you know, we celebrate the winter for turning, for leaving turnaround status. And we also, you know, appreciate the schools of recognition that have been highlighted throughout the district. One school I do have a specific question about is English, you know. And English is a school that we've looked forward to for a number of years now with the anticipation that they will exit turnaround status, much as the Burke did a few years ago as one of our higher-performing high schools. It's really been doing some great work around high school student achievement. So I wonder if Superintendent, you might want to take a shot. And I see you're motioning to Donna Muncie, our deputy superintendent. Give us a little bit of an indication of what, why we might not be seeing English in that exit status this year and what we might be looking forward to, to get them over the hump.
So we will also be having conversations later this month with the state around this exact question because the school's been in turnaround status for, since 2010. It's a long time. Primarily, the, the, the leading reason is the graduation rate. Okay? And there's, there's been incremental progress in the academic side and the test score performance. In the recalibration for this year, there was a slight decline overall in their, the outcome of their testing, but really the issue is the graduation rate and the number of students who are off track. And that's what holds the school back from exiting. And we'll get more information in that meeting we'll be having with the state and probably send you all, provide you all with an update after that conversation.
If I'm not mistaken, Superintendent, I, I understand that over a number of years, there's been a multitude of efforts within the school to address that, that very issue, the graduation rate. And so as we talk about this and as we have further reports, particularly, I would imagine this will come with a future report on what we're doing to further address off-track youth. I'd love to hear a little bit more about what the district and the school specifically is doing to further boost up graduation rate at that school.
I just want to point to one issue particularly in our large open enrollment high schools. And this is both a reflection back to the Parthenon data, but also a reflection forward to some of the equity strategies that we'll be discussing through Build BPS. This, in our open enrollment high schools that are serving significant populations of students with disabilities and students with special needs, many of whom are not on track to graduate, and the, their IEPs will have them in these schools until 22. Another issue, Dr. Coleman, you should feel free to address with the state at any point, is that these students' results are included in the graduation rate, even though they are placed in schools knowing that the majority of them will not graduate in a traditional way. The state knows that these students will not graduate in the, in the traditional manner. They will age out at 22. Yet those, those numbers are counted against the school's graduation rate, the four-year graduation rate. So the results and the progress that English has made in many ways. Now, and that's not to say that there aren't continued issues. There's some chronic absenteeism issues. There's some flat math scores that we'll need to look at at English and at other schools. But in this case, around the graduation rate, they can never get off the flywheel so long as the district's enrollment patterns are not looked at with an equity lens around how we distribute our specialized programs for our most vulnerable learners. 58% of our high school students with special needs are concentrated in five of our lowest-performing open enrollment high schools. Why? Because that's where there's space. So the schools that are struggling continue to be the ones who welcome our most vulnerable learners and then are penalized against a pattern that says that they are unlikely to graduate on time. So there's a state accountability and structural issue at the accountability level. There's a structural equity issue in how we address this. And it is one of the priorities that we hope to make a public and transparent conversation that is not just about our buildings, but about how we organize our programs. Our buildings support how we organize our programs. So you're going to hear a lot about this as we continue the conversation through Build BPS. It is also a critical part of our high school work, which is why they're a bit intertwined, not entirely, but our high school work is also very much around our open, the challenges and structural issues faced by our open enrollment high schools as much as it is about how we organize our alt ed. So I will say that. And not in English's defense, but in understanding the structural challenges that they are up against and how they are held accountable for a hugely challenging issue that we, and this is both not exclusively students with disabilities. We also see the patterning in English language learners, but it's particularly pronounced among our students with disabilities at the high school level in particular.
And I thank you for highlighting that inequity. And, you know, the, the work that schools like this do, they, it's almost as if you're pushing a boulder up a rock, excuse me, up a hill in the sense that, you know, you're doing the work that is the toughest work within the system, which is getting kids through to graduation when they've had life events that have intervened and put them off track. And we're doing that in an environment where they're under the microscope. The schools are under the microscope because they have these very students within them. So thank you for highlighting it. I think that gives us greater context to understand that, you know, while there's work to do, there's also externalities that we need to consider with respect to these institutions. And that is very helpful in better understanding where English is at. Do you have something to add?
And that is one of the areas that the committee's pushing back on the state on. That is one of the questions.
Very good. Thank you.
That's good news.
Well, thank you. Thank you to Ms. Driscoll, Ms. Taliani, Deputy Superintendent Granson, Deputy Superintendent, I'm sorry?
Ms. Dillman.
Yes, Ms. Dill, I was getting to Ms. Dillman last. Deputy Superintendent Muncie and especially Ms. Dillman for being so diligent in answering all of our questions this week. I know Dr. Uriarte peppered you with a number of questions over email, and she was sorry she couldn't make the presentation. But you've been very responsive, and we look forward to continue to work on this information.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. We have three speakers, beginning with Megan Wolf. She'll be followed by John Mudd and Mary Battenfeld.
Good evening. My name is Megan Wolf. I'm the parent of two graduates and a member of Quest. My comments tonight are my own. I'd like to thank the committee for the discussion regarding entrance to exam schools. And I want to comment specifically on the use of the ISEE as a criteria for entrance. The use of the test should raise a number of red flags for those aiming for equity in school assignment. These include general concerns regarding the use of a standardized test at all, which shouldn't be a given, but also a number of other specific concerns about the middle-level ISEE. Primary among your concerns should be that the exam is designed for students entering both seventh and eighth grades. This means that, means that much of the content on the test is way beyond the sixth-grade level, particularly for those in early November of their sixth-grade year. It also includes a number of tasks unfamiliar to those following a BPS curriculum. Most notable among these are the math content areas of the test, which to my knowledge are not included in the fifth or early sixth-grade BPS curriculum. These include the following. The area and perimeter of rectangle, squares, triangles, and circles. Square roots and exponents, ratios and proportions, probability, mean, median, mode, and range, percents, negative numbers, simple and linear algebra, including slope. In addition, approximately 15 out of 32 questions on the math test are in a format that most BPS students are not familiar with. This seems more like reading out rather than welcoming in. Some have proposed the use of the MCAS as entrance test. The test has its own drawbacks, but at the very least, it's closely aligned to the curriculum being taught in BPS schools. It might also have the desired effect of strengthening the profiles of public school students versus their private school peers. It certainly seems worth looking at. Finally, and on a different sort of minor topic, I'd also like to comment on the new practice regarding public comment at the end of the night, a change that some of you might not be familiar with. As I understand it, as of tonight, those wishing to speak at the end of the meeting must now sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Prior practice was that speakers can indicate their interest after the actual reports. Though I can sympathize with those of you just wishing to get out of here, I point out that the average number of speakers is usually two or three. I'm sure you could name us. So this usually takes about six to nine minutes. Speaking for myself, I almost never know if I have something to say about a report until I've actually heard it. Call me an optimist. The new practice of having to sign up at the beginning of the meeting may have the unintended consequence of encouraging speakers to sign up even if they have nothing to say or finding something to say to fill our time. I also fear that it may discourage Mr. Mudd from testifying. And from my point of view, that's reason enough not to do it. I'd ask you to reexamine this practice. Thank you.
Nothing will discourage Mr. Mudd.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Mr. Mudd now.
No rain, no snow, nor a dark of night. Good evening. I certainly don't want to disappoint Megan. I think I, like many of you, was struck most strongly by slide number eight of the data report that you received as I sat yesterday and observed the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Task Force. I think what hit me was that the results of the 2018 MCAS show no significant recent progress in reducing the opportunity and achievement gaps for marginalized students. To me, having heard about a persistent achievement gap loathe these many years, this is a call, these results should finally be a call for urgent action, for a need to shift gears, to give a jolt to the system. What BPS is doing is not enough to reduce these gaps. I would suggest a few action steps. One, the school committee itself needs to reaffirm its priority for dealing with opportunity and achievement gaps. Chairman LaCanto mentioned this, among many other priorities, in the retreat for the goals, the work of the interim superintendent, but that often seems to me to be lost in operational issues like transportation or in planning around Build BPS, both important issues. But I think that the committee needs to publicly reaffirm its commitment to opportunity and achievement gaps as a priority for action by the interim superintendent. Secondly, I would urge or encourage the interim superintendent to go to a meeting of the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Task Force, just like she did with the ELL Task Force, to present her OIG strategies and to hear for herself the challenges the group is facing in moving ahead on the multiple goals of the implementation plan for the school committee's policy. Too many of those goals are not being met today. And we need to discover why and what to do about that. Three, I would also suggest that the interim superintendent bring the Office of Achievement Gaps into the superintendent's office itself to give it the backing and status it needs to deal with the systemic issues that cut across many departments. The Office of the Opportunity and Achievement Gap has to be seen and to function as an executive arm of the superintendent on these issues. It cannot do that effectively from an organizational base two tiers down in the organization chart in the asset team.
20 seconds.
No. We have seen recent lack of progress on the student performance. I've also said despite many, many good efforts on the part of BPS, we've not moved the needle on staff diversity in any significant way over the past decade. Who is being held accountable? For example, on teacher diversity and on parent engagement, principals are not being held accountable as part of their core responsibilities. It's not a core responsibility on which they are evaluated. I think both of those, hiring and diversity and parent engagement, should be part of the cores on which principals are evaluated. You've spared many more comments, but you can read them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Our final speaker is Mary Battenfeld.
Good evening, and sorry to keep you a little bit longer. I wanted to make a comment on the chronic absenteeism, and I want to thank you for asking questions about it. One of the things we know about chronic absenteeism or attendance is that it's actually a better predictor of high school graduation than our test scores. So certainly it's something important to look at and important to address and Essa is asking us. So I want, I don't, one thing clearly you need to do is break down that data. Who is absent? Why are they absent? And so my comments are speaking what I know nationally in other studies about chronic absenteeism. One thing we know is that homeless students, one study in New York showed homeless students were two times more likely to be chronically absent. So certainly we need to look at what is happening with our homeless students. And we know BPS is having a growing number of them and how we can support them. We also know that students who take buses and have school buses and have district-provided T-passes are less likely to be chronically absent. There was a study in Minneapolis, for example, that showed that students who were given T-passes or took buses were 23%, had a 23% lower absentee rate than other students. So clearly, this data suggests we look at policy. We expand the free T-pass program. For right now, it's only if you go to a school that's two miles or two miles more. So expand that. And then we also look at some of the data related to what happened when we took away the yellow school buses for middle school students and how that might be affecting absenteeism. Three, Essa now, I believe, counts as chronic absenteeism as part of that rate, school suspensions. So this again means that it's important to address this, to really work more on restorative justice practices and again, to continue to reduce our out-of-school suspension rates. Four, one of the things we also know about why students are chronically absent is they're scared to go to school or they feel not supported. And this is something where more social workers and more, more emphasis on trauma-informed practices, and I know you're already starting to do this, but even more emphasis on this and particularly more support for social workers and more funding for them in the schools so that students can be supported so they want to go to school and are not afraid to go to school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. New business?
Yes.
Yes. Dean Robinson.
Not necessarily new business, just a point to add, if we can think about some of the action items that we heard tonight, Superintendent, just in regards to drilling down a little bit more of the chronic absenteeism, the science focus, just some of the marching orders that we saw in that slide. It would be great to hear a follow-up as to what is, how does the district want to respond strategically to that slide? So that's one. So that's one. Chairman LaCanto, is there going to be any focus on an evaluation process for the interim superintendent this year or a timeline? Is that something that is on the radar in the spring?
I will take that under advisement and get back to you.
Okay, great. And then also, in light of what we heard from the data report and the presentation around the challenges with K-8, it would really be helpful to also think about how the district wants to respond to more parent engagement, parent voice, and teacher-to-teacher conversations. I'm thinking about the K-8 schools. And I know Dr., yeah, Dr. Granson, having a history background, if he were an eighth-grade history teacher and he was having a conversation with a fifth-grade history teacher on why John is now different, why is he a different student, why is he, you know, how, how his percentages are lower? If those two teachers were having a conversation, what would they learn from each other as teachers from fifth to eighth grade? Because we see the percentages are so different from fifth to eighth grade, it would be really interesting to just see how the district will respond. As you talk about asset mapping, will there be some teacher-to-teacher conversations, especially in the K-8 space, since they're in the same building and you don't have to go across the district? So those are just thoughts to take under advisement.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Other new business? No? Well, that concludes our business for this evening. Our next school committee meeting will take place next Wednesday, October 17th, 6:00 PM. We're having two meetings in a row. We have the Council of Great City Schools meeting the following week out of town in Baltimore, which will take a number of district representatives out of the, the state and the city. So we're going to do two in a row. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Thank you, Dean Robinson. Looks like unanimous consent from the rest. Good night this evening.